Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, let's call the Board of Supervisors for the Township of Warminster meeting for Thursday, January nineteenth. Uh, let's call it to order and all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, please remain standing for one moment, um, just for our thoughts for all the brave servicemen and service women and all our civilian and other people that are serving overseas. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a fairly nice sized crowd here tonight, which is, uh, nice to see. Uh, announcements, uh, the only announcement I have tonight is we had an executive session and we went over, uh, some litigation issues, some personnel issues, and, um,
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I hope everybody had a wonderful, uh, New Year celebration, even though it's, uh, you know, a little, we didn't get a chance to really say that at the reorg, so, uh, that's all I have to say and I'll pass it to Kathy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we get to the commi- uh, Commissioners, Supervisors announcements, we do have a cleanup from last, uh, meeting that should have taken place, the last meeting, but it involved a vote and an abstention that wasn't properly explained. Uh, Ms. Charlton, did you abstain from a vote at the last meeting?
I, I did.
What was the vote you abstained from?
I, I did not vote in the, when it came to the duty tow.
And what was your, what's your reason for the abstention?
My reason for refraining was because my husband is the, um, one of the tow drivers and works for-
For one of the companies?
A to Z Auto, yes. So I didn't feel appropriate for me to be involved in the discussion or the vote.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, Kathy?
I have no, no announcements tonight, Mr. Chair.
Alright, Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I have a few, I'll try to make them brief. Uh, Park and Rec, uh, Christmas tree recycling is available at Warminster Community Park in the rec parking lot, eleven hundred Veterans Way between December twenty-fifth until January thirty-first. Please be sure to remove all decorations, including tinsel and other garland. But I noticed last week there's a big pile of trees, they're already growing, so they mulch them up and use it throughout the park. Uh, spots are still available for the, for the twentieth wine and cheese, uh, February, uh, the twentieth wine and cheese designer bingo event. They would still have, uh, room for players and sponsors, anyone who would want to sponsor the event as well. It's to be held on Fri- Friday, February the tenth, at the Ben Wilson Center, and you could go on the Township website for information. Facility permit requests, including pavilion rentals, have moved online, and this is interesting, and I might want to ask Jess to come into a future meeting and explain this to the public. You can visit warminsterpa.myrec.com, and if you go onto this, you can register you and your family. And anytime there's a, you want to rent the pavilion, there's an event or anything, everything gets done through there. They explained it at the last park work meeting, but maybe we'll get Jess into a-
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
-future meeting. And it's pretty easy to sign up. My wife did it and I did it during the park work meeting, so it's, it's fairly simple to do. Um, please visit the, uh, Park and Rec tab on the website, or you could call four-four-three-five-four-two-eight for any other information. I have two other announcements, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, Warminster Symphony will be holding their annual fundraiser event on February, January the twenty-eighth at Spring Mill, uh, Country Club. There's still a few, uh, spaces available. It's the Warminster Symphony Orchestra, along with Sonny Averone Jr., performing Frank Sinatra and Dean Martin. I can't wait for it, it's, it's really gonna be a nice event. It's dinner and a show. And it's the twenty-eighth and that's the Warminster Symphony, you could go on their website for, for, um, tickets. And also, the Warminster Rotary Club is having their, uh, Super Bowl block pool, and it's a fundraiser for our four-way speech contest. And there's plenty of blocks available, because it just opened up this week, and you could go on, uh, warminster rotary dot org, uh, for to, to go walk, it walks you right through it, how to pick your blocks and pay for just twenty dollars a block. And that's all I have, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Alright, thanks, Mark. Um, Judy?
Okay, um, well, my first thing on my list is the annual POPS fundraiser at the Warminster Symphony.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy.
So he took that off of me, that's alright, but it's ninety dollars a ticket, and if you'd like to call and get a ticket, you can call two-one-five-six-seven-two-nine-six-five-zero. That's two-one-five-six-seven-two-nine-six-five-zero. Um, I want to remind you all of you who have library cards, you should have received a survey in the mail or by email for a library survey to see what the residents want at their library, what kind of activities they want. If you didn't get one, you can get, uh, one at the library, and if you fill it in, you'll be entered into a contest for a fifty-dollar gift card, so that's up there too. And in the library, save the date, March twenty-fifth, they're gonna have a campout at the library, but you don't have to bring anything to camp out in. It's just, they're gonna have a lot of different tents, and there's gonna be games on different issues and information, there's gonna be music and clowns and balloons, and, and it's gonna be a, a really fun family event, especially for younger children, for, you know, before they get to be mean teens. Okay?
No teens are mean.
So try to come to them, thanks.
What's the time for that? Do you have a time?
Uh, we, it's a save the date, we don't have all the particulars yet, you know.
Okay, alright.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Alright, okay, Jess, you're up.
Okay, I just wanted to comment, last night I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, one of the fire town hall meetings, so it's nice to see some of the people that were there. Um, there will be several others throughout the township coming up, so just check the Facebook page, thank you.
Okay. Alright, I don't think there's any presentations tonight, so, uh, we'll go right to the land use, uh, public hearings and ordinances. I'll turn that over to Scott?
Yep. Yes, this is, uh, a hearing, opening now here on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It's a hearing of the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors on the conditional use application, uh, LD number twenty-two-two-dash-eleven of Drake Motor Partners, P.A., LLC. Uh, the property address is seven-hundred York Road, tax map parcel number forty-nine-dash-nine-fourty-three. Uh, the applicant is requesting to, uh, approval of a conditional use, uh, for, to permit motor vehicle sales on the property. It's use fifty-one in the Warminster Township zoning ordinance, and for the, and further to the extent deemed necessary, applicant also requested a determination from the Board of Supervisors under section twenty-seven-dash-seventeen-fifty-three-one-dot-D, that the two existing access points from York Road are allowed to remain on the property. Um, on behalf of the applicant, I believe is Amy Farrell.
Good evening, Amy Farrell with Kaplan Stewart for the, uh, attorneys for the applicant.
And I believe we have a possible intervenor here today, is there anyone?
Good evening, Matt McHugh, I represent, uh, PB Warminster Plaza LLC and War- Morton Warminster LLC, they're the adjacent property owner, uh, and we're requesting party status.
Okay. Any objection for the applicant to party status?
No objection.
Uh, board, in that case, will recognize the neighboring, neighboring property owner as seeking party status. Is there anyone here tonight also seeking party status?
Okay.
That time, alright, we have our parties to this issue. I will turn it over to Ms. Farrell to, uh, present her testimony.
Good evening, thank you. Again, Amy Farrell with Kaplan Stewart. Uh, we are here this evening, uh, as Scott said, in connection with the property at seven-hundred York Road, which I know is a property that you're all, uh, well familiar with. Historically, of course, as the Pathmark grocery, grocery store, and then more recently, uh, as a retail, for farmer's market thrift, uh, shop. Uh, most recently, it was the subject of several potential redevelopment applications that were, uh, before you, uh, in through twenty-twenty in connection with the Lidl grocery store chain. Uh, Lidl has elected not to proceed with the redevelopment of the property and has listed it for sale, which is what brings us here this evening. My client, uh, Drake Motor Partners, intends to renovate the existing building for use as a Tesla auto sales and repair maintenance facility. The uses will be located entirely within the existing building, there are no additions to or demolitions of the existing footprint of that building. There are, as you will hear from our witnesses this evening, some fairly substantial cosmetic and aesthetic upgrades to both the interior and the exterior of the building that are planned in connection, uh, with the retenanting. As Scott indicated, uh, the uses, uh, as proposed are a combination of repair and maintenance, which is permitted, uh, as a use fifty-two by right in the, uh, C-two commercial district, and the motor vehicle sales component, which is use fifty-one, that's the component that requires the conditional use. We did appear before the, uh, zoning hearing board last week, uh, and as Matt will confirm for you shortly, uh, we received several components of zoning relief that are related to the proposed uses and the proposed, uh, building signage. So we've completed that step of the process, we're now into the conditional use phase. Um, as I indicated, there are no major modifications or changes to the site itself. The building will remain in its present location and its present configuration. There are no new buildings proposed, uh, in connection with this use. Existing access and egress points are proposed to remain, and the large open space area, uh, to the northern portion of the site will also remain. As a result of ongoing discussions that we've been having with Township staff and with the solicitor's office, as well as input from the planning commission on two separate appearances there, we are proposing, as you will hear, some modification of the parking field to improve the existing lighting and add a pretty substantial amount of landscaping where none currently exists. Uh, we believe those improvements, in addition to the significant, uh, upgrades to the building itself, um, which I think we can all agree has fallen into disrepair, uh, represents a significant upgrade of the property. The work as proposed in connection with this, um, retenanting is all entirely within the property's boundaries, and as you will hear from our witnesses, is proposed outside of the public rights of way. Uh, there is one aspect of the project that does impact the adjoining property owner, uh, which is why, um, Matt's here this evening. Um, I think, as you're aware, there is an existing connection between the shopping center and this property. Um, that is the subject of a cross-access agreement between the two properties. Our initial intention was to retain that, uh, access point in its present location, we thought that was the least disruptive to everybody. Uh, however, uh, Matt's client has apprised us that there is a recorded easement agreement between the shopping center, Lidl, and the township that actually proposes to relocate, uh, that easement area a little bit further, we'll call it Plan South, we'll explain in a bit more detail momentarily. It will allow for a better alignment with the existing, um, interior circulation drive on the shopping center's property. So we have no objection to doing that, our intention moving forward will be to adjust that, uh, existing access point further, uh, uh, Plan South. Um, however, we are working with the property owner to determine exactly where that's going to land. Uh, there's a power pole on our side of the property and some relatively new sidewalk and, uh, ADA improvements on the shopping center side of the property, and we want to try to avoid as best we can, so we're not disrupting those. So it's possible that it may shift slightly from the easement location, but if so, uh, we'll paper that, uh, with a new recorded easement. But again, the intention overall is to shift that easement, um, access point further, uh, closer to York Road. Um, additionally, as I noted earlier, we have had several discussions with Township staff regarding the project, and we have review letters from Township consultants related to that scope. Um, so in addition to the property, or to the testimony that we'll be proffering tonight, uh, with respect to the conditional use itself, we'll also go through those review letters with you, uh, answer any additional questions that, uh, either Craig and his team or any of the, uh, board members may have, uh, relative to those open items. I do have with me this evening two primary witnesses, Matt Kears, who you see, uh, to my immediate right. He is the civil engineer for the project, and he will be handling, um, most of the laboring work this evening with respect to, uh, testimony in support of the conditional use. I do also have, um, Eric Austin Chuck with Traffic Planning and Design, he is our traffic engineer, and he will be testifying, uh, in support of the conditional use as well. Finally, while I don't intend to call him as a witness in chief, uh, I do also have with me this evening John Hauser, who's a representative from, uh, Drake Motor Partners, who could certainly answer any additional questions the board may have with respect to the proposed operations that we don't cover, um, in either, uh, Matt or Eric's testimony. With that, um, I have, uh, pre-marked exhibits that we have electronically up on the screen that we'll share as we go. I also have those in paper form, if anybody on the board would prefer a paper copy in their hands, I'm happy to hand that up as well, it's up to you.
Is that these?
Um, no, they're, they're numbered a little bit differently, and they're at eleven by seventeen, uh, scale, so I'm happy to hand them up if you'd like.
May I, please?
Sure.
And I'll take one as well, Amy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Did say they were eleven by seventeen?
There are, yeah, there are some-
Oh, flip out.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I have extra.
Yeah, I'll take one, please, Amy.
Yes, please.
And with that, I would just note, as a housekeeping item, um, at tab one of the pre-marked exhibit packets is the conditional use application, with the addendum and the agreement of sale and ovation that were included as part of the application itself. Describes generally the proposal, uh, and confirms, uh, standing of the applicant here. With that, I would go ahead, and as I said, I do have two witnesses, potentially a third who may speak. Do you want to swear them all at once, or?
Yeah, let's swear all three at once.
Do you have any, um, anything that you need to mark, or am I good to go?
I think we're good, you got them all marked? Yep, we're good.
Okay, great. With that, I would go ahead and call, uh, Matt Kears as my first witness. Uh, if you could, Matt, please state your name and business address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, Matt, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Matthew Kears, uh, address is fifteen-fifteen Murphy Street, Suite nine-twenty, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
And would you just please briefly describe your, uh, educational and professional experience for the board?
Yeah, I received a bachelor's in civil engineering from Penn State University. Uh, I've been practicing for a little over eight years, I've worked on everything from industrial sites to small residential units, um, and everything in between.
And you're a professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth, is that correct?
That's correct.
And at tab two, uh, of the board's exhibit packet, and up on the screen, we have marked a copy of your CV. Is this an accurate summary of your professional qualifications?
It is.
And just briefly, uh, who you're employed by presently and what your day-to-day activities are?
Yes, I am employed by Bowler Engineering, I'm acting as the branch manager for the Philadelphia office. Uh, my day-to-day is helping out with designs and managing the staff, uh, from a day-to-day standpoint, to make sure projects stay on track.
And have you testified as an expert witness previously before other municipal boards and bodies?
I have.
We would be seeking to, uh, um, have, uh, Matt admitted as an expert in civil engineering.
Uh, Mr. McHugh, any questions for the witness?
No, no objections.
Craig, you have any questions?
Nope.
Then, we'll accept him as an expert witness.
Great, thank you. And Matt, um, in connection with this, uh, this project specifically, are you general, generally familiar with the property that is the subject of the application?
I am.
And were you involved in, uh, the preparation of the proposed plans in connection with the application?
Yes.
And have you visited the subject property?
Yes, several times.
At tab three of the board's exhibit packets, we have marked, uh, the Alta survey, uh, prepared by Control Point Associates and dated September thirteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the first sheet of which is up on the screen now. Um, if you could just scroll out a little bit, just to try to get the whole plan out. A little bit more, and I think we'll catch your, uh, tab.
So while we're scrolling, I just want to check to make sure that your microphone is being picked up on the television, okay? Alright, thank you.
Uh, now, Matt, this, uh, this Alta survey that's up on the screen and marked as tab three, uh, does this generally depict the existing conditions of the property?
Yes, it does.
And can you, just, uh, for purposes of the record, uh, confirm the property's location and describe its general surroundings, please?
Yes, the address is seven-hundred York Road, uh, the site is located just north of the intersection of Street Road and York Road. Uh, the, the road has, uh, shopping, or York Road has shopping centers, as you can't see there, but shopping centers and commercial uses throughout the corridor, consistent with what we're proposing here tonight. Uh, Archbishop Wood is across the street, uh, to the south. Plains, or to the south, plain west, is the shopping center that Matt McHugh is representing, and, and to the north is Church Homes.
And what's the zoning of this property?
C-two.
And do you know the zoning of the surrounding adjacent properties?
Yes, the shopping center just mentioned is also C-two, uh, there's also R-one districts, uh, to the plain north and plain east. Uh, the one thing to note regarding that residential district is church homes, it's not single-family, and will become the homes, you know, that you typically see in R-one districts.
And, uh, again, just referring to that Alta, can you please just generally describe the existing conditions of the property?
Yes, so the existing conditions, the site is about a little over nine acres, uh, it's developed with a fifty-six-thousand-square-foot building. Today, it really is a sea of asphalt with some landscape, or not even landscape, sort of hardscape islands between that divides the parking spaces, as you can see here, uh, really is creating a, a eyesore when you drive past it. Again, it's really all just asphalt and collected building, uh, to this point.
And, um, how is the property currently accessed, and if, we might need to scroll down a bit on that image, there we go, thank you.
Yes, so the site has two access points off of York Road, one is a fully signalized access point here, uh, as you can see there, and then a right-in, right-out control here, and there's also a, as mentioned previously, the shared connection, uh, that's up here, that we will be looking to modify, to be located plain south here.
Um, and, uh, as I sort of alluded to, uh, in my opening, um, and as is summarized in the addendum to the application, this property is currently non-conforming, uh, to numerous C-two requirements. Could you just summarize those generally for the board, please?
Yeah, so there's a few, uh, starting with the impervious coverage, um, currently it sits at seventy-two-point-four percent, where fifty is required. Um, there's also a minimum parking setback that exists today at five-point-eight, where fifteen is required, uh, a York Road special parking setback that currently is five-point-eight, where fifty is required, and a minimum zoning district buffer where five-point-eight exists today, and twenty-five is minimum, and also a minimum class-two buffered yard where six feet require, or six feet is currently there, where thirty is required.
And do you know, uh, what this property was previously used for?
Yes, uh, for many decades, it served as a Pathmark grocery store, and most recently was the flea market.
And as you heard me, uh, confirm for the board, of course, there were some previous, um, uh, proposals for this property. Am I correct that it's currently vacant and has been for some time?
That is correct, yes.
And it's your understanding that Lidl is not proceeding with any of the proposed redevelopment here?
That's correct.
Uh, at tab four of the board's exhibit packets, uh, we have included a series of photographs of the existing conditions of the property. Um, if you could, uh, just walking the board, uh, generally through, uh, those photographs, and if you could just refer, as you go, to which sheet of those you're on, so that, uh, the screen adjustments can be made as well.
Absolutely. So starting on sheet one, you can see, as I previously mentioned, the concrete islands that separate the sea of parking, you see the asphalt there. Uh, you can see the asphalt itself is in disrepair, there's cracks, grass growing through it. Uh, the landscaping is not kept up nicely, if you s- go to the next slide, please. Yeah, this is a depiction of the building itself, uh, the frontage and, you know, the signage, right-in, right-out, right, right-in, right-out entrance I mentioned. As you can see on the right picture, right-hand side picture, it, you can clearly see the asphalt cracking with the overgrown vegetation growing in between. And, uh, on the left-hand side, you can see just the poor shape of the building as it's nature, being boarded up, um, being an eyesore as you kind of drive by the facility. And moving on to the next slide, you will see, this is the rear of the property, where really is, just has gotten out of hand with the vegetation not well-kept, uh, in really poor condition. And honestly, the, the vines you see growing on the building are actually protruding into the building to a certain point, you know, actually creating some destruction to the building itself, but as part of the application, and we're looking to modify all this and, and clean all this up. Moving on to the next slide, please. This is another, this picture of the loading dock area of the existing building, where you can see, again, just in really poor condition, uh, not well-kept, uh, by any means.
And, uh, can you generally describe, then, uh, what is proposed for the property under the present application?
Yeah, Drake Motor, Motor Partners, uh, is proposing to renovate the existing building, commercial building with a Tesla facility, to include, uh, motor vehicle sales facility and motor vehicle repair garage.
And generally speaking, are those, uh, uses that are permitted in this zoning district?
Yes, they are. The motor vehicle repair garage is a permitted by-right use. Uh, the motor vehicle sales are permitted as additional use, which is why we're here tonight in front of you.
And just for purposes of the record, we've also, uh, included at the board's, uh, exhibit tab five, a copy of a zoning letter, uh, for seven-hundred York Road, dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, from the Zen, the then, uh, zoning officer. Does this, uh, letter confirm, uh, your testimony that the proposed, uh, uses for the property are permitted to the extent you just explained?
Yes, it does.
Uh, moving then to tab six of the board's exhibit packet, um, we have included an overall floor plan, which was prepared by Nama Partners, LLC, and issued, uh, August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, does this show generally, uh, the proposed internal improvements and upgrades of the existing building that are proposed?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and, um, you and I had a bit of a discussion about this earlier today, that, that this plan predates, is that correct, certain of the supplemental elevations and the zoning plans that we'll get to in a moment?
That is correct. Generally, in compliance, there's a few minor tweaks, uh, that I'll discuss.
Okay. And if you could just generally walk the board through, uh, the proposed interior layout here, so they can understand a bit, uh, what's proposed in connection with both of the uses, please?
Absolutely. So, uh, the, you will enter the service area through here, this shows one entrance, there will be actually two doors here, as you see, space for two rows of parking. Uh, there's a service area directly to the right, and a service area, uh, kind of directly north there, where cars will be serviced. Uh, this area up here is an alignment center, where cars will come in for alignment, so on and so forth. And to the north here is a, uh, kind of a storage area for, uh, tires, windshield wipers, windshield fluid, things along those lines. Uh, and then in the front here, you have your, uh, kind of waiting area for anybody that comes in to get their car serviced. In here, this area here is a showroom that has, uh, two, two cars, two Tesla vehicles, uh, that you can come in and look at. These are bathrooms along here for, uh, customers, and then these two here is a men's bathroom for employees, and a women's bathroom for, uh, employees as well, and then a break room here. And this is office space, and then you have a car, uh, wash area, the cleanup, anything we do as we're going through, it'll wipe down, and then there's two exit options, uh, one along here, and then one along the front of the building as well. There's also two, or, yes, two loading operations back here, where deliveries will be made, such as tires and windshield wipers, as previously mentioned.
With respect to the service and repair, uh, will that occur entirely within the building?
Yes, all service and repair happens inside the building. It's worth noting, there, this is not a body shop, there will be no body shop work done here, no paint, nothing like that, uh, strictly maintenance, tires, things like that.
And is there any outdoor storage, um, of equipment or, uh, product of any sort?
There is not, uh, there i- there, there's storage inside for new tires, but all used tires will be stored outside, per the Fire Marshal's request.
Uh, now, we have, as I said earlier, we have John Hauser with Drake Motors, uh, here with us this evening, um, who can certainly speak more specifically to any, um, operational questions. But generally speaking, do you have an understanding of those operations, uh, as you've developed this plan and based on your discussions with John?
I do.
And, um, the sales and service at this site, uh, is it limited to Tesla vehicles, or is it, is it expanded beyond that?
It's strictly Tesla vehicles.
Um, is that true even with respect to trade-ins?
That's correct, yes.
And as far as the repair and maintenance goes, is that, um, otherwise open to the public, or is it just limited to Tesla customers?
Uh, just Tesla customers.
Do you have an understanding of how many vehicles are generally held on-site for sales purposes?
For sales purposes, as mentioned, there's two vehicles inside the building, um, for sales purposes, but this is not your standard dealership where you have hundreds of cars sitting in the parking field itself. It's ru- that, there is space for cars to be there, when you order a vehicle, it'll be on-site, but it's not your standard, um, automobile shop where you have hundreds and hundreds of cars sitting out front.
And so how does that work, then, in terms of just the, the, the process there? If I want to purchase a vehicle, um, through Tesla, whether I come to the site or I, I do it online, can you just speak a little bit to how that works in terms of how this facility will be used?
Yeah, absolutely. So Tesla, as you know, is a, a very evolving company, and what they're looking to do is kind of set the standard for how cars, you know, get purchased moving forward. So their model is, almost everything is purchased online, so even if you come to the store, you want to look at it, they're more than, they like that, they want you to be there, they want to encourage you to get your hands on it, feel for it, but when you actually order a vehicle, it's all done online, and it will be delivered to this, the, sort of the selection you make, um, whether it's this location or another location, but for this location, it'll be purchased online.
And then once those, uh, that purchase is made and a customer elects, uh, to have that vehicle, uh, delivered here, what, what does that process look like?
Yeah, so they will schedule, they will schedule an appointment to come pick it up. Um, when they schedule that appointment, their car will be there, uh, a service member will show them some, how to roughly work some of the inner workings, uh, but again, everything's by appointment.
And with respect to the maintenance and repair process, can you speak a little bit to how that will work?
Yeah, similar process. Most, the majority of the servicing will be done by appointment only. They do have some windows for stop-ins. That all is done inside the building. No bodywork or paintwork is being done, and there's really no fluids to these vehicles, not your typical oil that you see with standard vehicles.
Now, given that these vehicles are EV, there's always obviously a lot of discussion around the batteries, specifically given that it's not a traditional battery setup. Are batteries stored on-site here or how does that work?
They are not. The batteries, you know, for these vehicles are not your standard battery. You see, it's not when it dies, they pull it out and they store it and you get a new one. In order for, they only do maintenance on batteries. If something's wrong with your battery, it's a whole new battery. So they schedule that appointment accordingly, and they actually have a truck come in the same day that your appointment is, give you a new battery, take that old battery off-site. So everything happens within that day as scheduled.
And do we have an understanding or an indication of how many employees are anticipated at the property once this property is in full operation?
Yes, there will be about thirty to forty employees, including both the maintenance and the sales.
And will those folks all be on-site simultaneously?
Not simultaneously.
And that thirty to forty number, that includes both sales and the service and maintenance employees, is that right?
That's correct.
Do you have a sense of the generally proposed hours of operation?
Yes, so Monday through Friday is nine to eight. Saturday is nine to five and typically closed on Sundays.
And those are fairly similar to a standard, any other sort of auto sales dealership that might be out there, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Now, there are, and we'll get into location in a moment, but there are several EV charging stations that are proposed outside of the building that will be actually located to the rear of the building. Are those stations available to the public?
No, they are not. They are strictly for the cars that are being serviced, and it's not your typical interface as you can see at a wall or on the roadside. This is strictly for, you know, the employees to utilize for charging the cars that they're working on.
Turning then to tab seven of the exhibit packets, if you could. These are a series of color elevations, again, prepared by Nama Partners, which we've pre-marked at tab seven, which are now up on the screen. Can you generally describe the exterior changes that are proposed for the building itself, please?
Yeah, as I previously mentioned, the site is really in disrepair. So what we're looking to do is give it a very nice facelift by improving some vertical panels, adding some vertical panels to really break up, you know, the facade and really make it a more desirable look. The glass window you see there, the glazing, really raising that height to really have that pop, and really adding additional colors, you know, per Tesla's standard to really show the improvements we're looking to do here. And really just kind of, you know, give it an overall desirable look as you drive by. We want it to stand out. We want it to be something that fits within the community, something that fits within the corridor that's in today.
And the bottom elevation on tab seven is the front or main elevation of the building, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, are those improvements that you were speaking of generally being carried around the other three sides of the building as well?
They are, yes.
Turning then to tab eight of the board's exhibit package, which we've marked as the zoning site plan. Oh gee, I don't have that date in my notes here. It's zoning site plan C dash zero-one with a plan origination date of November fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two, prepared by Bowler. Did you ever see preparation of that plan?
I have.
Now, as I noted in my opening, there are no additions or demolition of the existing building footprint as a result of this proposal, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, there are additionally no primary structures or any additional primary structures proposed for the site, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, there are, however, and I think you alluded to this a bit in the floor plan discussion, there are some minor modifications around the perimeter of the building that are being made to provide the necessary access and to generally clean up the building. Can you sort of walk through for the board what's proposed? And in terms of the, on the screen, it may be helpful if we zoom into the building itself, if that's possible. There we go.
Yeah. So, beginning at the front of the building, as noted, we're going to provide two ingress and egress locations, one here and one here. By doing that, providing some aprons for both these vehicles and really just improving the entire sidewalk along the frontage to really make it a more friendly pedestrian user walkway. As you saw earlier in the picture, it's really not compliant today, really not where we want it to be from a desirable standpoint. Also, going to add some ADA ramps to provide ADA access from the ADA parking as you see here. Moving along to the north side of plan east here, no improvements are really made there. Just there are some staircases there today that we are going to be removing to provide some better circulation for the overall facility. And then moving on to the rear, again, no real major changes here. Relocate a PGO transformer there and add a man door here for access purposes. And then here are those charging stations previously mentioned. Moving to the last slide here, last slide here, these are the existing loading operations that are currently there today. We are going to maintain two of them and provide a man door there as well. And then this is one improvement on that side, as you saw on the elevations, where this will be an exit point for the cars that are being serviced with a ramp there to get down to grade.
And are all of the modifications that you've just described occurring on areas that are already impervious?
Yes, they are.
And to the extent that any zoning relief was required for any of that work, was that relief granted by the zoning hearing board last week?
It was. And as part of that, we moved the trash enclosure and the used tire storage out of several of those setbacks.
So we still, we did get, just to clarify for the board, we did request and were granted relief with respect to the buffer yards in that location, is that right?
That is correct.
But we did agree to shift those slightly to be out of the side and rear yard setbacks?
Correct.
And is it your understanding, based on discussions with Mr. Hauser, that the interior and exterior modifications that you've described to the building are all that is necessary for Tesla to operate safely and effectively from this property?
Yes.
Now, as you heard in my opening, and certainly as you're aware since you've been the one drawing it all, we have also discussed several additional site improvements for the property as a result of our ongoing discussions with township staff and the planning commission, is that right?
That's correct.
If we could turn to tab nine, please, of the board's exhibit packet. We have included here a rendered site plan entitled zoning plan rendering, the origination date of January sixth of two thousand twenty-three, also prepared by Bowler. Does this generally depict the proposed modifications to the parking lot specifically that we've been discussing with staff?
It does.
Okay. And could you just describe generally what's proposed?
Yes, so starting along York Road, really what we look to do, based on the consideration of the township, is really provide a deeper buffer from York Road to the parking facility. Removing, currently today, there is thirty-seven parking stalls along this frontage. What we're doing is removing those, adding a landscape buffer there, and then beyond that, really making the entire parking field a lot greener. We look to resurface the parking as is, based upon this condition of it, adding these landscape islands, as noted, on the end caps, as well as in between to break up the parking. So as you're driving by, you're not seeing just a sea of asphalt, you're seeing some landscape pop in between, in addition to the building renovations that we're doing on the exterior. Also in that is going to be upgraded lights to bring them up to current standards. As noted in the strategy I saw, they're very old, outdated. We're bringing them up to LED standards and really matching what's par for the course in what we're looking for in today's engineering side of the world.
And will all of those improvements as proposed occur within the property boundaries and outside of the right-of-way?
That is correct.
And do any of these upgrades result in an increase in impervious coverage?
No, actually, as you can see, we're adding additional pervious coverage, so adding more green space, removing impervious cover.
And as a result of that, we're actually going to reduce the overall, the existing non-conformity relative to the impervious count, is that correct?
That's correct. Today, it's about seventy-two percent. We'll be decreasing it to sixty-eight percent.
Now, there's, as shown on this aerial and rendering, there is a large green area along the property's northern boundary currently. Is any development proposed for that area?
No, there is not. No development proposed for that area.
And are there any changes proposed to the existing access points to the property?
No, accesses are remaining the same along York Road. As discussed previously, we'll be looking to modify the shared access to be located more in line with, you know, the access down here per the agreement with Lidl and the shopping center owner.
And am I correct that we would have no objection to a condition, and we have actually worked out a condition with Mr. McHugh that was provided to Mr. Holbert relative to that shared access, that we will relocate that access to align with the recorded easement or to adjust as needed at agreement of the parties if we can to avoid some of those other improvements, is that correct?
That is correct. No objection to that.
Now, earlier, you confirmed that we secured zoning relief last week related to the trash and tire enclosure. There was additionally some relief required relative to the uses that was granted. Could you just explain generally what was granted?
Yeah, we got, or we were granted for both a motor vehicle repair garage on-site in conjunction with a motor vehicle sales use, and also to permit motor vehicle repair garage within a hundred feet of a residential district.
And again, that, those approvals and the testimony that was provided last week is consistent with what's been provided this evening relative to the uses?
That is correct.
Now, given obviously that we're here this evening for a conditional use, we do also require a conditional use to permit the motor vehicle sales use, is that right?
Yes.
And what section of the ordinance references the motor vehicle sales use?
Twenty-seven dash thirteen hundred point C. That permits the motor vehicle sales by conditional use in C2 district.
Now, additionally, there's language under section seventeen fifty-three, which describes a motor vehicle sales use, and that contains some specific requirements relative to the use. However, let's go through the general CU criteria first if we could, and then we'll get to some of those more specific details. I'm sorry, actually, let's do it the other way around. Before we get to the general CU criteria, let's go through those seventeen fifty-three provisions. So, section twenty-seven dash seventeen fifty-three A provides that all repairs conducted in connection with the motor vehicle sales use must occur within the building. And as you previously confirmed, we meet that requirement, is that correct?
That is correct.
Seventeen fifty-three B provides that auto parts and related storage must also occur within the building. Do we meet this requirement?
Yes, all parts are stored within the building with the exception of the used tires that will be stored external per the fire marshal's request.
Seventeen fifty-three C provides that storage and display of vehicles cannot be within twenty-five feet of the right-of-way line. Do we comply with that?
Yes, we do. As noted earlier, Tesla's, you know, cars for purchasing in the showroom will be inside the building. There will be cars in the parking field, but those are not cars you can walk up to, get inside, and test drive.
And additionally, by relocating or eliminating some of that parking along York Road in favor of landscaping, are we also extending the distance into the site before a vehicle could be parked in any event?
That is correct.
Seventeen fifty-three D provides that a sales facility cannot be served by more than one access point unless approved by the board of supervisors. And we are proposing to maintain both of those existing access points, is that right?
That is correct.
And I will note for the board, we had sort of as a belt and suspenders because of the language in the initial zoning officer and planner's review letters, we asked for that relief as a protective measure from the zoning hearing board as well. The zoning hearing board did determine last week that because of the language in your ordinance that leaves that decision to you, they did not have jurisdiction. So that's why you saw it in both places, if you saw the zoning hearing board application as well. We did request that in connection with the conditional use, so it is properly before you this evening as well. Finally, seventeen fifty-three E allows for an auto body shop as a necessary use. However, as you indicated earlier, there is no auto body work proposed here, is that right?
That is correct.
And then the last one is seventeen fifty-three F, which requires that parking areas for auto sales and service be clearly delineated to be separate from auto display and storage. And again, at least initially, there's no proposal for exterior auto display and storage at this time, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, of course, if that should become a component of the operation in the future, the applicant, am I correct to say that the applicant would certainly work with township staff to confirm that those areas are properly separated?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, as you indicated previously, twenty-seven dash thirteen zero zero point one point C permits motor vehicle sales by conditional use. It does not, however, identify any specific objective criteria under that provision that an applicant must establish, is that right?
That is correct.
It refers instead to part twenty-five, which is the general conditional use standards of the ordinance, is that right?
Correct.
All right, so let's go through those briefly. Section twenty-five zero six point one point C one provides that the use must be permitted by conditional use, which you've already indicated it does, correct?
Correct.
And that it must comply with applicable district regulations related to that use or where necessary seek the appropriate zoning relief. Do we meet that standard?
We do.
Section twenty-five zero six one C two provides that the use should conform to the off-street parking, loading, signage, and non-conformity provisions of the code. Do we meet those provisions, and can you explain just briefly how?
Yeah, yes, we do. We receive relief from the zoning board regarding the loading, sign relief, I'm sorry, from the zoning hearing board. There's several non-conformities that we are maintaining or actually improving.
And with respect to the parking and loading, we satisfy the dimensional and parking count requirements of the zoning ordinance as to both, is that right?
That is correct.
We'll have Eric speak to sections three, four, and five shortly, as those are related to traffic circulation. So, moving to twenty-five dash zero six point one point C six, that provides that the use should be adequately screened from adjoining uses where necessary and appropriate. Do we satisfy that provision?
We do. As noted, the shopping center south of us is a similar use, but we are adding some additional green area there, adding the buffer along York Road, which is, you know, separated by York Road itself. And then, as noted, there's still the large green area that we're maintaining to the north of the residential district.
Next, twenty-five zero six point one point C seven provides that the use should be consistent with the township's comprehensive plan. The township planner has confirmed in its review letter that the use is in fact consistent with the comp plan, is that right?
That is correct. It's a commercial use within a commercial corridor. We feel confident that this is a good use for what's there today.
And then finally, twenty-five dash zero, twenty-five zero six, sorry, point one point C eight references part one of the zoning ordinance, which is related to the promotion of the general health, safety, and public welfare. Can you just speak generally to your opinion as to the suitability of this use for the property and the impact on the surrounding properties?
Yes. Again, I think it's in relation to what's there today. It's dilapidated building. It's not safe. You know, there are some people back there at times. So we've heard, and really just upgrading that to what it is we're proposing is just going to eliminate any danger you have out there today regarding sidewalks, the building itself not being in good condition. And again, the commercial use is consistent with what's around it today. The shopping center is just adjacent to it, and the commercial uses, you know, along York Road as well.
And that is sort of the sum total of the requirements relative to the zoning ordinance with respect to a conditional use, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, additionally, as I indicated, the township consultants have provided a number of review letters with comments on this project as we've been working through these projects or the plans with them, is that right?
That is correct.
And we have, we're going to spend a few minutes, just so the board knows, going through some of the specifics of those review letters with you relative to anything that we think is still an open item that requires perhaps some further discussion. we think is still an open item that requires perhaps some further discussion either with township staff or some input from the board in terms of what direction you would like us and staff to go as we start to sort of sort through those things. So, turning first, Matt, to the fire marshal's letter, which is of October fifth of two thousand twenty-two. I do not have the review letters in the packets, but I do have a few additional copies if anybody on the board does not have them and would like them.
Please just give us a second. We have them here.
And again, the first one that we'll be looking at is the October fifth, two thousand twenty-two letter from the fire marshal. Or I should say Department of Emergency Management and Services, Joe Beltman.
Yeah, I'll look at it. I want everyone else to find it. Is everyone, is everyone there yet? It's in the, it's kind of in the back, past the...
Sorry, Matt Tomlin, I think Craig probably asked me the same question. There's a January fourth, I think it's a repeat of the October fifth letter, but the January fourth one may be the one that's in your packet. That may be the confusion I'm creating. Apologies.
The first one was for the sketch plan.
Correct.
The second review that you just referenced is for the conditional use.
Correct.
Thank you. We have quite a lot, you know. I, I looked at this already, but I wanted to have it in front of me. There's, there's, the packet's very thick tonight. Plus all your ancillary drawings and things.
I promise there is actually something to discuss here. I'm not going to get, make through all this effort to get you there and then just say we will comply and move on. There is actually one comment we want to talk about.
All right, everyone there?
I think we're all there. Matt, if you could then, as I indicated, as I just sort of alluded, there is one comment particularly in the, in that review letter that we did want to discuss relative to the minimum width of access around the building. Can you describe generally for the board what the concern is there?
Correct. So it's comment one A asking for twenty-six feet around the entire perimeter of the building. Majority of the building does provide twenty-six feet. The only area it does not is a small sliver here at twenty-four feet. We did, we did show the delivery truck for the cars to make that maneuver with no issues, so we're confident that a fire truck can make that as well. We also don't want to add any additional impervious. We don't have to regarding that extension to the twenty, you know, twenty-six feet. Not proposing to change the building at all, so wanted to just kind of get that out there and let it know that the only area that's not twenty-six would be in this area here. But again, we'll be happy to show circulation for a fire truck to accommodate that comment.
And, and we're not talking about, you know, a ten-foot wide area that should be twenty-six feet, right? We're, we're pretty close to twenty-six feet?
Correct. We're twenty-four feet.
Anything else in the fire marshal's letter that, that we have any concerns, or, excuse me, the emergency management letter that we have any concerns about?
No, no issues with the rest of that letter.
Turning next to the January fourth letter from Gilmore and Associates. I was going to say, you guys were probably all just there, right? And I made you go on a different one.
I'm sorry, where do we go?
Gilmore, sorry.
Yes.
Here it is. January fourth one?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, this one certainly does have a little more teeth to it than, than the letter we were just looking at. If you could just walk the board generally through.
One second, please.
Sure.
Much further back do I have to go here? Back in here? No, this is the other thing. I saw that right.
Well, they're looking for the record. I just noticed that the review letter you just mentioned from our office has the wrong year. It was issued on Jan., and I know there's a sonographer. January fourth, twenty twenty-three is when it was issued, although it was inaccurately marked on our letter.
And I'm going to suggest to you that that is the case with all of the township consultant's letters as I'm looking at them. So it wasn't just you. They're all dated January fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I didn't proof theirs.
Good catch.
But yes, we would agree with you that it was issued January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Matt, if you could just generally, there's obviously a lot of comments here. I think most of them have been addressed or are in process with the township engineers, but certainly if, anything specifically that we should be speaking to you more directly tonight, please?
Yeah, just, I just, just starting with the landscape and lighting, which are under review. We did provide those, you know, later on in the review, but we're willing to, for a condition that would be resolved satisfactorily to the township engineer regarding lighting and landscaping on that matter.
And can you just, those are numbers six and seven of the, is that correct? I just want to note for the board which, which numbers those are.
Six, six, correct. Seven... Seven has a couple. Sorry, give me a second. Oh, yes, sorry, yes. Yep. Yep. Correct, yep. So six, seven A, and seven E.
And so just to be clear, with respect to comments six relating to landscaping, seven A as to the light pole, and seven E, the emergency vehicles and general circulation, those are plans that have already been submitted to township staff and are under review with township staff. We're anticipating some review comments, and we're willing to certainly work back and forth with them on those comments.
That's correct.
Any other particular portions of, and again, putting the, the, anything that we are, you know, we are, will comply or don't necessarily have an issue with aside, are there any other specific comments in the township engineer's review letter that we wanted to bring up tonight and raise for the board?
Yes, comment five regarding the PennDOT timing and approval there. We are in interpretation that, you know, we're not making any adjustments to the right-of-way, so that should not require any PennDOT approval or review at this time.
And again, Eric is here tonight to speak a little bit more to that as well, correct?
That's correct. And then there are another...
Any others?
Yep. So, seven B regarding calculations for the stormwater, the hundred-year design there today. Again, we're not, and we're not adding any additional purpose area, so no additional runoff is being created. We're actually decreasing the amount of runoff. So we don't want, we don't feel that we're obligated to provide any calculations for the system that's there today. As our understanding, there's no issues with that system on our site. We're willing to clean out the outlet structure for any sediment that's built up over the years, but again, don't want to have to comply with any new regulations that are there today. And I don't think it's reasonable for us to have to add any calculations since we're not increasing the runoff. And then, letter seven I regarding insulation curb ramps in the driveway from PennDOT standards. Again, not doing any improvements to the right-of-way, so do not feel that these are required for us to do so unless it's actually the necessary by PennDOT. At this time, we don't feel that we need any PennDOT approvals, and we're not making any improvements to the right-of-way itself. And that was all the comments I had on that letter.
And I just wanted to also confirm, I think we mentioned seven E, which has to do with the vehicle circulation plan. Seven F speaks a bit more to some proposed pavement markings within the parking lot. And again, consistent with the plans that we have submitted and our discussions with staff, we'll continue to work with them on where it makes sense to add any kind of internal circulation markings. Is that right?
That's correct.
The other, the next, turning next then to the Carroll engineering letter, also dated January fourth, two thousand twenty-two, but as Craig correctly noted, is actually two thousand twenty-three. I think everybody's on, on that letter now. Matt, was there anything in the Carroll engineering letter that provided any specific concerns or generally anything that we need to address for the board?
No, this letter pretty straightforward, preconsistent with the other letters we received, so no, no objections for this letter outside, outside the right-of-way improvements requested.
So again, to the extent that either letter is, is speaking to improvements that would be within the right-of-way, we're not currently proposing any of those, correct?
That's correct.
But any of the comments within these letters related to improvements within the site boundaries, no objections there?
No objections.
Can you identify in this traffic engineering report which items you're, you're not going to consider, please? Or is everything in this letter? You just talked about something about everything in this letter is okay except road improvements. Can you, can you identify that in this letter, please? Yeah, well, I would like you to identify that, please.
Yes, this letter actually doesn't speak to anything regarding, you know, the right-of-way improvements necessary, so this letter, we'd be compliant.
Okay, thank you.
And then finally, we're not going to go into any great detail with respect to the township planner's letter, which was issued the same date as the remainder of these letters. The bulk of the comments in the township planner's letters, letter, excuse me, address the bulk and dimensional zoning requirements that were addressed with the zoning hearing board. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the balance, is it fair to say, generally address the landscaping and lighting suggestions, which we're currently in the process of working through with township staff?
That is correct.
Was there anything else in the planner's letter then that required any additional discussion looking forward?
No.
With that, I don't have any additional questions for Matt. We are going to call Eric Austin Chuck, who can speak a bit more to some of the traffic-related comments, but certainly happy to answer any questions you may have of Matt at this point.
Sure. We'll start with our interviewing party. Matt, do you have any questions for this witness?
No questions.
Mr. Kenner?
Thank you. Matt, we spoke several times. Our staff's been working together. In fact, we've had several staff meetings that Amy referenced. So, I know we are on the same page, but to get into the record and for, for the board, you've been consulting with your client, but I get a lot of technical questions. And first question is, you haven't submitted any, I have a landscaping plan, a lighting plan, a zoning plan, but none of those plans have details as far as a cross-section of, of the pavement that you're proposing, or the concrete, or any type of standard engineering details. Will you be providing those?
So as of right now, it's still in flux on what exactly we're going to do from the paving standpoint. When the crew gets out there, they're really going to try to maintain as much as they can, not create earth disturbance, and really don't overlay the plan. If there is, you know, deemed unsuitable moving forward, that, that would be placed in kind. So to answer your question, we would be willing to provide some details in regards to that matter.
Okay. Have you identified, and you went over and described, I'm not sure which exhibit, but your proposed improvements. Is there a limit of your pavement removal that will be replaced with, I think, lawn or landscaping? I'm not sure which. I think, I believe it's along the frontage of York Road. That is currently asphalt, correct?
Is there a percentage you asked for? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Is there a detail for what you're going to put back? Six inches of topsoil? How that amenity is going to be installed? Any details, any specifications? Is there any of that provided on the plans that you?
I believe it's on the landscaping plan that we recently provided.
Okay. So there will be some earth disturbance?
Correct, yes.
All right. Are you applying and submitting an erosion control plan to the Bucks County Conservation District?
We are not at this time. I mean, it's, it's under an acre disturbance. I know that's an NFTs permit.
I'm just asking for, for a general permit for erosion control plan. Will you be submitting that for approval?
We are not at this time.
Okay. Are you aware that the Warmster Township Chapter nineteen that applies to all properties in the township does require that for any earth disturbance regard, anything over a thousand square feet?
Yes.
Have you, okay, so you're aware of that? I think it was mentioned at the planning commission. I'm not sure about the zoning hearing board, but, and I'm not sure if you did or not, but you talked about the location of the vehicles for sale. There's only going to be a couple. It's not going to be a sea of parking, several hundred parking spaces. Are you, is your client proposing an area for used parking, whether it's now or in the future? And if so, is that identified on the plans?
For used parking, I'm sorry?
For, I'm sorry, for used, for used vehicles in the parking field.
So really, the parking field how operates today, what the intent is, there's going to be kind of a flux of how it goes, right? So if you, people order vehicles, there may be a large shipment of vehicles at that given time, provide that. In the same way for employee parking will be there. And then also, just as a whole, when you train your vehicle, your car may sit there while it waits for the process to be picked up and relocated to another facility. Does that answer your question?
Not really.
No.
Are you going to have, at some point in the future, will they'll be selling used vehicles at this property?
To my understanding, that is not the, that is not the intent as of right now.
Okay, I believe that, I thought that was discussed in the meeting minutes at planning commission.
So, and I think John can speak to that more specifically as far as the future goes.
And I'm sorry. And if anything goes to the traffic engineer, I know you and I've worked through most of it. Who will be, I know the zoning hearing board had a condition about a traffic study for the parking circulation and flow. That, will that be submitted at a later date as well then?
So I, I think they were looking for really the same thing that you have, you've identified, I think, in your review letters as well. They, they wanted to make sure that the township is getting something that shows what the interior circulation's going to look like, a determination as to whether some additional stop signs or stop bars or any of those kind of things should, should be provided. So...
And you'll, you'll prepare that after you've, I believe you're working with the Warmster Plaza representatives to work out that easement and then...
Right. So once we know where that easement lands, we'll be able to...
So you will be submitting that at a later date for township review?
Yep.
Matt, you mentioned about the writing, I believe right-in, right-out driveway is existing. Do you know if that was ever permitted by PennDOT with the prior owners? I know it's been vacant for a lot of years. And I know you were involved with the other project with Lidl. We worked together on that. Was there, did you ever see or any reviews or any conditions attached to that driveway?
Not to my knowledge, but all signs lead to there's a permit in hand for this, this facility based upon just the timing of when the plan was previously approved, and PennDOT standards, HOPs should be aligned with that.
And, and I do agree that you're not touching or doing any improvements within the right-of-way. It is customary for a change of use to at least notify PennDOT of that. Are you going to be doing that as well, since it is a different type of use than was there before?
So I think Eric will be speaking to that more specifically from traffic.
That's fair. I will defer all my questions related to the access easement, because I understand you'll be submitting that and working that out, so just for the record. You indicated that you did provide to the fire marshal the maneuverability of, for fire access, addressing issues in his letter that you referenced. Forget the date of the letter, but?
I don't think we have, I don't think that was on the last set, but we are willing to resubmit that.
And that's part of my issue with, I haven't seen the final product yet to advise and provide new recommendations. I think we're willing to all work through that, but for the record, I have not reviewed that yet.
Understood.
As far as your proposed parking layout, and it does look different, a little bit different than the, mainly the landscape, or the concrete islands were removed, going back to the pictures that you submitted as evidence. What design criteria did you use for this new layout as far as the parking space dimension, parking aisle dimension, access width? What standards did you use?
Yeah, we followed the township ordinance.
Okay, which ordinance was that?
I don't recall off the top, I had the exact ordinance number.
Okay. The configuration now will provide for drainage to flow across the property, I believe from, as everybody's looking at, from left to right. The detention facility is the green open space area in the bottom right.
Correct.
Have you analyzed how this layout, even though you're not, and I agree that you're not adding any impervious, but how the drainage characteristics and the flow across this site will change, and will it all still get to the existing stormwater facility?
Yes, we reviewed that, and confident that everything is still drained in the same patterns. As you mentioned, it all kind of goes into this corner here, where there's a small gathering point that gets piped over to a large basin on the side.
So no runoff will be directed to York Road or any other adjoining property?
That's correct.
Again, you have not provided any details for any of the landscape islands. That would include any fencing you're proposing, the enclosures for storage? You'll be providing details for those at a later date?
Yes, the fencing, there's no fencing per se. I know at one point there was conversation about fence along there, that's no longer happening.
Okay, so there's no fencing proposed, there's no fencing proposed around the property at all for screening?
No.
So when you said it was adequately screened, and you went through the conditional use requirements per the township and the MPC, in your opinion, it's adequately screened? What's there now?
Correct, yes, for the residential districts, the green area is there, and then our improvements along the frontage with the landscaping, provide additional screening from York Road.
All right, so what are you proposing landscaping-wise in the rear of the property along the residential district?
So that's remaining as is today, it exists non-conformity. Again, it's heavily wooded along there, and it's not necessarily your single-family homes there, you know, it's Christ Homes, so it's not the standard home you'd see in a R1 district.
On the Warmster Plaza common property line, staying on the buffer yard. You did testify that you moved the two structures outside the setback, but they are within the buffer yard. They're both proposed structures, they're not existing non-conformities, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you did get zoning relief to place them in the buffer yard?
Correct, they are being placed on existing impervious, so those are currently, those buffer yards currently don't comply. We did get relief to add the trash enclosure and the tire enclosure within that same area.
So when the removal and I guess mill and overlay, I guess is the best way to describe the parking lot, you will not be removing any impervious within the buffer yard and planting it with vegetation or any type of landscaping?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Other than, you know, along the frontage, we talked about the additional green area there.
Right, I was referring to the common property line in the rear, so those structures will be placed on new asphalt, I take it? It'll be all milled and overlaid, and then the structures placed on the new asphalt?
The closure, Eric, yes.
Yes, okay. Do those enclosures have roofs, or are they open?
No, they're open.
Okay. Touching on the lighting, and I know you said that you'll comply with all the comments, and just for the record, lighting is in section, zoning ordinance, section 2020. Item four refers to any project that's not a land subdivision land development, shall, the lighting shall be reviewed by the zoning officer and in compliance with the subdivision land development ordinance design criteria. And you and I have discussed that, and you agreed to do that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not sure if you had a chance to review it yet, I know we only spoke a couple of times here, but in that section, there's design standards for the light poles. What's the proposed height of the lights for this project?
I don't recall the exact height at this time, but again, willing to work with you on anything we have on that front.
I believe I read that it was 24 feet, and the ordinance requires 20. And this may be a question for you, Amy, but if there's certain design relief needed for landscaping and lighting, that mechanism and how that will be approved by this board and township, whether that's all on me, subject to my satisfaction, or a waiver of relief, you know, should be granted, because I believe some of the lighting you cannot comply with. And I don't have objections, I just want to bring the inconsistency that the zoning ordinance, and you did not receive a variance for the lighting, so it needs to either comply or variance since it's related to a zoning section.
Right, so the zoning hearing board determined that to the extent there are existing non-conformities with respect to lighting, those can continue forward.
Yes, I agree.
The intent otherwise would be to comply with that saldo provision there. So I think a waiver or, you know, subject to your review and approval would be the appropriate kind of mechanism there.
And you're okay with, you're okay with that?
We're fine with that, yeah, I think the zoning board took it as far as they could take it.
Are there, are there different lighting intensities for the sales area, or is, I know you provided a lighting plan, we haven't reviewed that completely yet, but will the lighting intensity for the sales, usually around where the cars are being sold? I'm not sure if there's anything going to be out front or not, but is there different lighting intensities there, a peak or anything like that?
So the sales portion is inside, there's no, there's nothing outside.
So there won't be anything outside, then?
Correct.
Is there any security wall-mounted lights proposed on this building?
Yes, there are wall-mounted.
Does your lighting plan show those?
It does, yes.
Are all the lighting poles within landscaped islands on your proposed plan?
They are, as of right now, yes. One thing we are considering as of this point is providing some kind of ADA access. Several of those lights may be conflict that path, but that's still under review internally at this point.
Okay, so all light poles will be within a landscaped island? Okay. You just mentioned accessibility and sidewalks, so I'll jump over to that. Currently, there is no, I believe you testified, no pedestrian accessibility from the building out to York Road. It's only around the building, there's no sidewalk or path?
Correct, yes, there's still accessibility in the sense of you can still walk the parking
But no designated sidewalk?
Correct, yes. And that's something we're working on internally.
And I was going to ask, are you willing to work with, on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Will you be up, will you be replacing all the concrete on the site? It'll be all, all concrete work will be demolished and replaced?
Around, yes.
Around the building?
Yes, correct, yeah.
And all that will meet ADA accessibility, I believe you testified to?
Correct, yes.
Regarding stormwater management, and I understand, again, there's a decrease in impervious, you testified that you're not changing the drainage characteristics. I'm not sure if you're aware that the township has a free-standing ordinance, stormwater and stormwater management, Chapter 26. You meet those exemptions because you're decreasing the impervious. In there, there's typical standards such as operation and maintenance agreements, where there's inspection, future inspection. Is there currently an O-N-M agreement with this property? Have you seen that?
I have not seen that.
Okay, I have not either. Are you willing to execute a stormwater and maintenance agreement for the future maintenance of that facility?
Yeah, we assumed that some level of maintenance requirements would be part of any kind of conditional use approval.
I believe you made it a lot easier saying we're going to work together on the landscaping and lighting and other conditions, so I think that's all I have for right now, and I'll defer the rest until the traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second, I have, I'm going. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a few. Can you show me the discharge point for the stormwater management, please, again?
Yes, so today, and what we're matching is everything, she flows in a standard direction down to an area, as you see here, that's existing, it's more of like a cash basin type area, and that is piped underneath the driveway and discharges to approximately right here, where all kind of ponds up, and then this has an outlet structure, and this relative corner that discharges out this way.
Okay. Thank you. Another question, this in turn is about the comment from the former emergency management director. In your plans, can you provide us the swing radiuses, or the radii or radius from where it's 24 feet? So normally, I see those in plans. Will they be provided?
The turning radius for the trucks?
Yes, the turning radius, yes, okay. For vehicles that, triaxles, fire equipment, tractor trailers, that'll all be included?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I was at the, I did visit the Devon site as, just some reference points. I know they mentioned to me that they like to be good neighbors. So as far as public improvements, you're, do you have any, anything for the public? You know, is there anything else you're going to do on this site that would benefit the residents of this township? I mean, one thing, I don't want to get into comments, I have a question here. The residents, where this, where this stormwater is going to be discharged, it goes right into that, I think it's a 48-inch culvert or whatever it is, and then it flows across onto Archbishop Wood, which in turn floods the residents down gradient. Is there going to be any additional public improvement or another look at stormwater?
At this time, no. Again, what we're doing is reducing runoff, reducing the amount of runoff that's there today, and not modifying the basin by any means to make it worse, and really kind of working with what we have in that parameter.
That's all I have at this point. I'll reserve other questions for your other witnesses. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Craig took up my questions, thank you. Makes it easier. About how long do you think your next witness would have to testify?
I think, Eric, probably 10 or 15 minutes, I mean, we're just really focusing on a couple of the questions related to the permitting of that.
I'm just thinking about the time. 10, I mean, I think we'll be, how much, how many questions do you think? Not much.
I only have a handful, it's more about the operation.
Then we can get to you, yeah. Yeah, we get through him, and then that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. With that, I would then call Eric Ostimchuk. And Eric, you've already been sworn, so if you would please, your name and business address for the record?
Yes, Eric Ostimchuk, O-S-T-I-M as in Mary, C-H-U-K. Local office is located at 2003 Lower State Road, York Township.
And can you just very briefly for the board, describe your educational and employment background, please?
Certainly, I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering from Wider University. I'm the vice president of transportation planning, traffic planning and design, and I've been there for almost 25 years.
And have you generally, previously testified as an expert witness before municipal boards and bodies?
Yes.
At tab 10 of the board's exhibit packet, we have included a copy of your CD. Is that an accurate summary of your professional qualifications?
Yes.
And we would be moving to admit Eric is an expert in traffic engineering.
Mr. McQ, any questions?
No questions, no questions.
Questions, no objection, will be accepted.
Thank you. So Eric, you were obviously here for Matt's testimony this evening regarding the building improvements and the overall proposed site improvements. Drake Partners asked you to take a look specifically at the proposal with an eye towards any potential traffic impacts from the proposed use to determine, in part, whether it was, it made sense to retain both of the existing driveway connections, and whether there were any other improvements that would be advisable or suggested as a result of this work. You did, in fact, take a look at that and prepare a letter, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And that letter is at tab 12 of the exhibit packets dated November 18th, 2022. This was included with the conditional use submission, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and can you just generally describe for the board what you looked at specifically and what the results were?
Certainly, Exhibit 11, Exhibit 11 is a letter I prepared to Mr. Pierce, looking at several items of traffic, several traffic items for the site, not the least of which is the amount of traffic regenerated by the proposed use, since we are in a conditional use setting, I felt that was appropriate to look at. We evaluated, I evaluated the traffic generation based on the previous use as a supermarket versus the proposed use as the dealership. Turning your attention to table two is probably the easiest to speak about with regard to the generation. And we'll see there, we evaluated several time periods during the day during which you would look at traffic generation at the top here, average weekday, double day on average Saturday, and then even an average Sunday. Even though it's anticipated to be closed on that, there is data available. The data we utilize to evaluate the traffic generation is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's, it used to be a very thick, bound handbook, but it's since been put online, thankfully. But that contains data sets for a multiple amount of land uses, and what they do is compile information throughout the country and Canada for operations at existing uses, and they classify those into different types of land uses. They have information regarding residential uses, office, industrial, and certainly supermarkets and automobile sales. So based on those data sets, we found that, as indicated in table two, the traffic generation would be significantly reduced based on the previous use. You'll see under supermarket use, you have about 5,000 vehicles per day or trips per day, reducing to about 1,500 or so. To put that in context, 1,500 trips is not 1,500 vehicles coming to the site, that's 750 coming, 750 vehicles, that's how a trip is calculated. Similar, in similar fashion, you'll see a reduction as we go through all of these different types of time periods here, PM peak hours, that's typically your brush hour, time periods between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, similarly, the morning between 7:00 and 9:00, and then Saturday peak hours. So all a reduction in traffic over what was previously seen at this site for the use.
I just want to interrupt you for one second there. Understanding that there's been obviously a gap in time between the prior grocery use and the proposed use, the reasoning behind still looking at that supermarket use, is that a result of the way that those driveways were designed initially and what they were designed to accommodate initially? Or why else would you be looking at the supermarket use versus the current?
That's essentially what it is. When the land development came through, and the last record we saw of land development for the site was somewhere 94, 95, when Pathmark came in for a when path mark came in for a expansion on the north end of the the building. So when that was done, we noticed on the plans that a condition of their approval was obtaining a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT, which, you know, we surmise that they have done so, went through that permitting process, and in doing so, they have to demonstrate that the traffic in the site can be handled on roadway and at the driveway. So that's why the comparison is made. And, you know, we're talking about a conditional use, whereas someone could theoretically come in and occupy the supermarket tomorrow, whereas we're looking for a change in use, but the traffic is less.
Sorry, I didn't want to, did you?
That's all right. The the next is, I'll jump down to the bottom of page three. And this is just to give you an idea of the amount of traffic on York Road that exists today, today meaning in 2017, when the last published data set was available pre-pandemic. To give you an idea of what kind of the traffic anticipated for the site would would look like in addition. So you're seeing, you know, certainly less than 10%. That's a conservative estimate, that's not people who are already on York Road or, you know, going through the commercial corridor and hitting other places. So that's that's well within a reasonable value for operations. Going up above that, we talk about the access layout, and I think in terms of testimony, if we went to exhibit nine, I believe, was the rendered exhibit?
Yes.
So as Mr. Pierce testified too, there are the two existing access points to York Road and the existing connection to the adjacent shopping center. Here we have the right-in, right-out driveway and the full movement driveway at the signalized intersection opposite Roberts. So in evaluating this in conjunction with Drake, I found it appropriate to have these two driveways remain for a couple of reasons. One, in terms of site circulation internally, if someone is down in this area, they don't necessarily have to traverse the entire site to get back out to York Road. They can come in or exit the site at the right-in, right-out driveway. Additionally, if you're traveling south on York Road, you'll notice this grove of trees here. So what can occur is if a vehicle, a motorist is traveling southbound, they may not see the site. It's a view shed that's blocked by those existing trees. So if they happen to miss that access, they have the ability to get into the site here without having to U-turn or go into the adjacent shopping center. Additionally, there's some median, there's a median in New York Road here that is provided to keep those movements restricted to that right-in, right-out movement, and that's the typical treatment you would want to see to hinder that as much as possible. The distance is sufficient such that the two driveways would operate essentially independently, not conflicting with each other. Also, I wanted to note that when available, certainly I would want to provide a secondary means of access should it be needed for emergency vehicles. So having the two access points to York Road provides that ability should one access be blocked in the case of an emergency.
Now, in connection with the the conditional use itself, there were a couple of conditional use criteria that Matt and I skipped over, given that they are actually traffic-related items. And starting first with 2506.1.1C3 of the ordinance, which provides that vehicular access to the site should be provided in locations and at sufficient distances to prevent undue traffic hazards. I think you did just go through that a bit, but would you generally agree that we satisfy that provision?
I would.
And then 2506.1.1C4 provides that the use should not result in traffic that is out of character, excuse me, out of character with the normal traffic using the adjacent roads or exceed any safe capacity of the public roadway system. Do you have any concerns that the traffic as generated from this site would create any kind of abnormal traffic on the adjacent roads or any unsafe conditions?
No, I have no concern. In existing commercial corridor, as I said, we anticipate less traffic than previous uses. Very consistent with what's occurring today.
And then with respect to 25 dash, oh, excuse me, 2506.1.1C5 is a provision that the use should not create any significant additional congestion. Do you have any concerns with respect to congestion of traffic?
No, I do not.
Now, and I think you spoke to this a bit with respect to the the review that you undertook related to the prior land development approvals and the permitting of those driveways. I think Craig also alluded to notification to PennDOT with respect to change of use. Can you speak to those a bit in terms of what's proposed here and whether or not you expect that PennDOT would have any review interest over the site?
Right, and I did hear the question earlier with regard to the existing permit and change in use. And to clarify a bit, what I can do is indicate how PennDOT issues permits, and they don't issue permits based on a specific land use. What they do issue permits on is a classification of driveway. Their classifications of driveway range from minimum use driveways, which you would see for, you know, a single-family home, upwards to a high-volume driveway that you would see at a regional shopping center, and that typically has your large islands, your traffic signal and such. So the the question that I always pose to my clients as applicants is, are you proposing any work within the right-of-way? And Mr. Pierce indicated that we are not, so then there would be no interest from PennDOT in that regard. And then are you proposing a use that would then change the classification such that you would need a higher classification driveway? To put it in context, you have an office building on five acres that you're now turning into a walla, where you would have probably significant more, significantly more daily traffic that would indicate the difference in the classification. So in this case, obviously, we have less traffic than was originally evaluated as part of the surmise permit in 94, 95. So I don't anticipate any interest to that regard.
Thank you. I have no additional questions.
Mr. McHugh, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Penner?
Yes, I have a few. Are you aware that school buses are using this property, I think either as parking or turning around at the light?
I I'm not aware of that currently.
So I will just say, that did come up, I believe, with the zoning hearing board as well.
Correct.
I know Lidl has struggled mightily over the last five years and has been working with the township to block access where it can, particularly with respect to overnight trailers and things that were parking. I don't know that there's much that can be done about the the bus access through there, but, you know, we, I think we would love to not see it as well. Happy to work with the township if that's something that's a concern.
And that was going to be my question is, I assume you would, your client would not want that and be working with the township to eliminate any conflicts with school buses through a new dealership?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I think we'll see.
We're not entirely clear on why they're coming through there to begin with, but we'd love to not see it.
I'm not either, so I wanted someone else to educate me, all right? I get the questions as well. You mentioned about the signalized intercession, signalized intersection, and there's open space before that, just north of that, and there is some existing trees. Did you inspect that intersection as far as any maintenance or any tree removal? I understand the township does own the signal, but we only have a certain amount of easement for that signal, and then the rest is PennDOT. Is there any type of clearing or tree removal that's necessary if you inspected that intersection?
I have evaluated the intersection in that regard. I didn't see an issue in regard to the site distance, it was more of a cone vision for the building.
Correct, yeah.
More than anything, and as you indicated, when there are trees within PennDOT's right-of-way, it's really to them to to clear what's needed. I didn't see anything that visually impaired, seeing the traffic signal as it operates. There is a notice further north on York Road, I believe, for a signal ahead sign that's existing today. But again, I was speaking more in terms of cone vision for the site, visualizing the site, knowing when to turn and having that ability to enter the site and approach that.
Did you review the signal permit plan for that intersection?
I have seen it, yes.
Okay. You mentioned earlier that, and I would agree with this, that the second driveway serves many functions, but one is also for emergency access. For the record, you are aware there's a third access point to the neighbor, to the Warminster Plaza, that could also serve as emergency access, correct?
Yes, I'm absolutely aware of that.
So if if the right-in, right-out driveway was removed, there'd still be an access that has a current recorded easement, I think was testified earlier, that emergency vehicles could access this site?
Yes, that that's correct, that they could access in that event. But I will add that also that functions in the same manner, whereas you can provide.
I understand, I just, I just want to make it clear.
Additional access to the southern shopping center through that access easement.
Okay, thank you. The, you referenced in your report, and I agree with that, the last published data because of the pandemic was 2017. Was your office engaged with doing a traffic, a current traffic study in 2022 or 2023 for York Road?
No.
Okay, so there's no current study performed, any survey, traffic counts, or anything to that nature performed?
None, no, I completely, on our way up.
You seem familiar with, and I expect you to, as a professional traffic engineer, to be familiar with PennDOT standards. Just to clarify, and I'll also ask a question at the end, that my earlier question about PennDOT and the permit, I'm aware that once it's permitted, and I agree with your statement that this use is less traffic than any prior supermarket. I don't have an issue with that. It is customary, and I know it's not in writing, but there is policies, and you and I probably worked on many projects, maybe not together, but we've we've done this many a times where a change of use, at least PennDOT likes to review to make sure everything's up to current standards. You mentioned 1994, and we're all sitting in this room, and everything's based on current standards, current zoning, or it's current building code, and you keep referencing a project that was back in 1994, and you and I are both aware that standards do change. Have you ever had a project in the past where you at least submitted to PennDOT to ask for a review at a minimum of the the traffic signal of any upgrades regardless of the traffic counts?
For the traffic signal?
Yes, just a signal.
Yes, I have.
Okay, I have as well. And for clarification, you used for supermarket land use 850, and you're referring not to 263 Marketplace, but to the, which was occupied after the path mark. Your land use 850 supermarket is referring to when the path mark was in full operation at the time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Your report also indicates that, and I think you're being conservative, conservative, and you mentioned in your report about this project will contribute about 7% to future traffic along York Road. Would that number change if, either way, if you use current standards for a traffic study in 2023?
Current standards?
As far as traffic, if you had, if you performed a traffic count analysis, and you would have to modify it, would that 7% change drastically? Or would there be maybe a minor increase or decrease?
I would anticipate a very, very minor increase or decrease.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions from the board for this witness?
Just, just a couple quick ones. So getting back to your table two. The supermarket, number 850, that is, those numbers were from when the path mark was fully operational?
Correct.
Okay, and the automobile sales, what's that number referred to?
Automobile sales, the 840 after it?
Yeah.
That, 850 and 840 are monikers given by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they're land use codes. So there's an 800 series that deals with retail establishments, automobiles, that's everything. So that's just the moniker given.
Okay, so these are just like, I guess you could say, standard numbers out of a manual?
Correct. If you go to page one, you'll see under trip generation, it gives the description provided by I T V for land use 850 and land use 840.
Okay, I understand. So I guess wouldn't, because this place has been vacant, and you haven't done a, not a traffic study, but an analysis or whatever you want to call it, the traffic, would you say that the traffic on York Road, since the path mark was in operation, would have increased because of the development north and west of the township?
I will say that, I will speak in general terms, since I don't have specific data to York Road in that regard, but I will say that PennDOT typically publishes anticipated growth rates in their documents based on the classification of road location, based on the county. And they typically range from anywhere from 0% that you would see in Delaware County or Philadelphia to somewhere south of 1%, that's per year growth that you would anticipate in, you know, in Fox County. I don't have the specific percentage, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of less than 1% to 1%.
Per year?
Per year. So that's the the typical growth that you would anticipate, so, you know.
So have you?
I would anticipate it would be something.
Right, would, I guess my, I guess my question would be, would it be fair to say that the traffic has increased on York Road in the last 10 years? And we're actually, because its property is vacant, we would be actually adding 750 trips in and out. Now, does that number include maintenance or that generic number of auto sales, number 840?
The the numbers provided account for all traffic entering.
All traffic, okay. All right, so that's fine, thank you. And one last question, as far as the the right-in, right-out. Are you going to permit trucks that miss that entrance to to make that right turn in or make that, make a right turn out from that intercept, from that?
I I don't believe that we will, I'll defer to Matt for answering that. I believe all all deliveries will be directed to the traffic signal.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
I have no additional questions. I did want to call John Howser just briefly to clarify, I think there was a question about vehicle, used vehicles and what might happen in the future, and I just want to make sure we're consistent from planning commission to zoning board to here. So I'm just going to ask him to.
Thank you.
He's got a much better handle on that kind of future growth.
Sure, thank you.
Yep, so go ahead there, you can have a seat down. You are sworn, can you just identify yourself, name, and your business relationship, please?
John Howser, Drake Real Estate, 496 South Broadway, Denver, Colorado.
Thanks. There was a question earlier, I think it was posed to Matt about whether there, whether there may be a point, whether it's in the immediate future or somewhere down the road, where there might be more vehicles stored or displayed on-site, whether it's new vehicles or used vehicles. Can you just speak a little bit to kind of what the current versus anticipated trajectory is?
So at the moment, Tesla is a great problem, which is they can't build them fast enough. So every car is ordered specifically for a certain customer, and the delivery time can be, you know, weeks to months before it shows up. And so that's the current state, and there's a lot of car dealerships, actually, a car company's going to this model where they're not producing a lot of inventory to sit on the lot for a lot of reasons. So however, there could be a time in the future where production does catch demand, and there would be some inventory on the lot. A lot of second-generation Tesla owners are trading in their Tesla for a new Tesla. Now, those are also typically pre-sold, but there could be situations where those cars are on the lot. And then I guess the third reason would be when the trucks come in with the new load of cars, and maybe sometimes it's several trucks, it can take up to 30 days for customers to pick up their cars. So so the parking is very important, you know, our customers use the parking, our employees use the parking, and there will be some inventory on the parking. But it is unlike the traditional car dealerships where there's rows of cars, you come in, you shop for a car, you drive that car home that day. That is not their market.
Thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, that's helpful.
Matt, any questions?
No questions.
Craig?
No.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, if I may, John? Are you going to come back, is he coming back for testimony?
No, he was not, so certainly if you heard.
Okay. Do you want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So, as I said, I did visit the Devon site, Devon Tesla dealership, and one of the things I noticed is that they actually have a Pennsylvania dealership license. What is your plans for the Warminster facility? Do you plan on applying for a Pennsylvania dealership license?
You know, I don't handle that for them, but that is my understanding, but I'm not, I'm not certain about that.
Okay, because the follow-up question would have been, what happens if Pennsylvania denies that license?
Yeah.
And I know you don't have the answer, but maybe that's referred to you, Amy?
Well, certainly, I think that there's, and again, I don't handle that for Tesla either, so I think what I can tell you is that my, my general understanding of the way that that works is that it, it has to do with where a title is transferred, so the dealership does not necessarily have to hold the license if it's a, if it's a collection of dealership. So I, I don't know that there's always a dealership license that attaches to each individual facility. I think it is, you know, Tesla can have a Pennsylvania dealership.
That is absolutely not what I was told.
And again, that's my understanding, but I, my, again, that's not what we handle.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
For purposes of this facility, it really doesn't matter. We, I build these facilities for them all over the country, sometimes they're service only, sometimes they're service and sales, sometimes it's auto and body paint. In this situation, they're having me design it for a new car showroom, so I believe that they're probably legally licensed to sell new cars there.
Okay.
Possible they're not, but it'll still be a service center regardless, but it is complicated, and every state's different, and some of them are shockingly difficult to sell new cars in. And in those, they don't have me design the new car showroom, if they can't sell on there and transfer a title.
Okay.
So I, I guess I never really thought about whether they could do it or not, when I, when they give me the plans, I.
I understand, so you're, you're basically the developer, and then, I guess, so is, is, are you going to, are you purchasing the property?
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to be leased to Tesla?
Yes.
Okay, just, I don't know if these questions are relative for you, John, John, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, do you know how, estimate, how many truck deliveries per day do you think you'll receive?
It's not even a daily occurrence.
Okay.
You know, and again, that's lumpy, you could have three trucks in a day, and then, and no trucks for a month. It's significantly less, you know, if you look at the existing building, there's two dock wells and four truck hide, they have six different loading docks, as you can imagine, grocery stores have deliveries all day, every day.
Right.
Dramatically less.
Okay. And I, I got all kinds of different numbers from, depending on who I spoke with on Tuesday, but your estimated, how many employees, I know it's not going to be immediately, but so, as, if you could break down, and just as a ballpark figure, the number of technicians, salespeople, how many employees do you anticipate to be here?
Well, I know it's around 40 at full capacity, I do not have the breakdown of who does what.
Okay.
But on the floor plan, when Matt was discussing it, you could see there is, there is a, a area for sales reps, and then there's the customer lounge, and then there's the number of bays in the back, so you can kind of get a feel for how that is.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions.
Yes, I, I thought he was coming back the next time, so apologize for that. Are you involved in any walking us through construction to the end, or is someone from Tesla? Okay, so you're involved through construction?
Yes.
Yep, yep, that's it, thank you.
And I just have one quick, would you have any objection, I mean, we don't have anything before us right now, the idea of some sort of like site security improvement agreement where, I mean, obviously you're going to be doing work, the repaving work, make sure, making sure it's done, engineers review, and, you know, if anything were to happen, we'd have something, financial security, to make sure that work got completed. Is there any general objection to putting that forward?
Well, we don't typically put up letters of a credit or anything like that with cities, unless we're working in a public right of way, these are all private improvements. And I can mention that, you know, we have a very thorough set of plans to be submitted to the building department. So some of your questions earlier about the landscape, and the plantings, and the irrigation plans, and the photometric plans, and whether we're complying with dark sky standards, and, you know, the LED lighting, and all those things are really more for our building permit set, but we have all of that. I mean, we've been working very hard on this for seven months, and we have probably a 90-page set of plans to be submitted to the building department. Health, safety, OSHA, ADA, all those things will be addressed in our building supplemental.
John, as I explained to you before, that would fall on me, as township engineer, not the building. LNI is building only, so that's why Matt and I have been discussing stuff at staff meetings with our staff, stormwater landscaping, lighting, accessibility, all that falls on the professional consultants, only building, your building plans will go, but in Pennsylvania, that all falls. And it's inaccurate that every project we have, it's all improvements are secured to guarantee that you don't leave the site, and it's in an unsafe situation where you, I understand Tesla's a little different story, but the rules don't say there's exceptions for big corporations, so.
Sure, is there a certain concern that you're thinking, you?
Nothing general, nothing general specific to you, just, we're just, it's just part of our normal processes with.
It's actually in accordance with Pennsylvania and Minnesota's planning code, and there's disagreements on what can be secured and whatnot, and we're not looking to, you know, have this big letter of credit like we have on a Costco, or, or other type of developments, but the improvements I'm reviewing, I have to ensure they're installed. So if the light standard is installed at 26 feet, my job is representing the township to make sure that is installed at the correct height. I represent the township and the residents to protect their health, safety, and welfare.
Right.
And so, anyway, the big set of plans that we have, someone, whoever's going to review them, whether it's you or building department or whoever, will comply with all those standards, and if, if the standard is a 20-foot light pole height, we're happy to do a 20-foot light pole height.
And I think we are willing to work together with you on that, that's part of why I had so many questions on the technical end, usually that would be addressed already, and building code, building, the LNI department would just receive your building plans, so.
And we can work through that.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have, we can figure out what part of this is engineering versus building permit, and attack it that way.
I have no further questions then?
We don't have any additional questions, I would ask that the exhibits be moved into the record.
Okay, all exhibits A1 through A11?
Yes, correct.
Perfect, all right. And just as a cleanup, I tend to add my exhibits at the end to see what's at, I just would, like you, any objection, just things that were mentioned, I will put into the record as well, the fire marshal letter dated 11, excuse me, 1/4/2023, the Gilmore Associates letter dated 1/4/2023, the Carroll Engineering Letter dated 1/4/2023, and the reciprocal easement agreement dated October 31st, 2017. Any objection to entering those into the record?
No objection.
At this time, after discussions, the hearing is going to remain open, as we've been discussing here, that there are some few open items, we're going to work some things out, we're going to continue the hearing to a date certain, that will be February, let me make sure I get the right date, February 2nd, two Thursdays from now, February 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM here in the office, or here in the meeting here, well, not office.
You cannot.
I'll say one thing, all right, in one meeting, one day, but with that, though, we're continuing it, so there will be opportunity then for public hearing as well, anyone, we will open it up right now in this moment for public hear, for public comment, excuse me, if anyone has any public comment that they would like to address now, knowing that they couldn't be here in two weeks.
Just in case I'm not back here in two weeks, we have no objection to the proposed project, we actually support it, we think it's going to be a great redevelopment, we just ask that the board impose the condition regarding cross-axis easement that Amy and Matt testified to, we just ask that be imposed as a condition.
Yep, and I think it helps that, you know, in the easement, and it's been identified that part of that easement is actually, there was a previous easement owned by the township for this purpose as well.
That's correct.
Yeah. Anyone else with potential public comment on this application? Yes, sir, come on?
My only question is.
Come on up.
Please go up to the microphone, and just identify yourself for the record for our stenographer here.
My name's Harry Mofford, Senior, property owner in Warminster Township.
Thank you.
I guess, John, the question is, the building that is designed, how many vehicles was it designed to service?
Well.
On a daily basis?
It's, it's hard to answer, because inside the building, I think there's 18 lifts, but there's not 18 cars at once being worked on with 18 technicians. The labor is the trick there in, in the business model, so you put three cars up on the lift, and one guy works between them, some of those cars might be on there for 45 minutes, some might be on there for two days, and so it's difficult to give you an accurate answer. But I guess I would say there's probably eight to 12 appointments a day, I would guess. Tesla's not unique to any other car dealership, when you have your car serviced, you call, you make an appointment, it goes in, they do an analysis of it, maybe they, you know, obviously Tesla doesn't change oil, but then if they find something wrong, then they have to call you and say, we found the brakes need to be replaced, or whatever, and we need it another day. So it's hard to know, to tell you exactly how many come in and out of the garage per working day.
I would imagine there was some thought process to putting whatever number of service bays are in the building.
Yes.
And we had the other engineer testify that there was 1,500 trips per day, or 750 trips per day, so I was just curious as to why the parking lot would be so large.
Yeah, well, like I said, there's inventory, there's customers, there's employees, and, you know, they're in the automobile business, and so parking's precious to them. I guess I would maybe say it's similar to like a restaurant, if you have 400 seats in a restaurant, there's not 400 people in all those seats all the time, but there's a kind of organic life to how the cars move around within a lot in the business, and we've given a lot of parking back in lieu of landscaping on this project.
That was my only question.
Yeah.
Somebody have another one?
My name is Michael Negafin, I'm also a property owner here in Warminster. General question, and a specific question. Specific question is relative to the construction work that's going to be going on, what's the time, timeline, and the general question is, how does this project benefit Warminster residents?
The specific question, and it might even lead into the second general question, is, you know, Tesla wants to be a great neighbor, and they will be a great neighbor, they're making a very large, long-term commitment to this community. Our construction budgets are between $6 and $8 million on this site, we went out of our way to really take what is a dilapidated old building and make it beautiful. If you, if you notice the elevations, we've doubled the size of the storefront glass, we've raised the height of the parapet to cover the HVAC unit, we've had three different building materials, a very sleek, modern, fresh look. It's a great-looking building, and we didn't skim, we are going to great lengths to make this a beautiful property. So that will also create great paying jobs in the business, as well as a nice tax base for the community. So we're bringing jobs, we're bringing tax base, and we're taking what's a pretty ugly looking building, and we're going to make it spectacular.
Roughly, how many jobs will you be?
Well, I mean, they all, they all hire from within the neighborhoods, it's 40, I mean, everything from the general manager all the way down to the service desk.
Understood. And what's the timeline on the construction?
We'd like to start construction around March, they desperately need to be open this calendar year. As a publicly traded company, they made commitments to Wall Street, they really want it open this year. We have our, we haven't awarded the contractor yet, but we have the contractor numbers in, and we're ready to go.
And would we be able to expect certain restrictions relative to the hours and the days that construction work would be going on?
That's in our ordinances, yes.
Yes.
And that is?
Seven to something.
The typical seven to seven.
Yeah, I believe so.
Monday through Saturday.
I can't remember off the top of my head.
I'm not sure if Saturday is seven to seven, but it, we have it in ordinance, and it's clearly defined in there, and we will enforce that, yes.
Great, that's all, thank you.
Go ahead.
John Preo was 674 Joseph Allen, I just have one question, I know it may not be the right time to ask it, but my concern is the mercantile tax coming back to the township. So if you get a customer that goes online and orders a car, and it gets shipped here to Warminster, sits on the lot, and they're from Connecticut, they come down, how do we count the amount of cars and, that are coming to the township that are getting sold, but we're not really able to track them because they're, the finances are maybe going from the consumer to the manufacturer, not to the dealership? So how do we get a, you know, like I know how they do it with the supermarkets, they have an auditing company, they go in there, and they order all the books, and da-da-da-da, but how do we know that we're going to get, or just do on the, on the tax part of it when it comes to that? If they don't have a dealer's license, then how do we track them? You know, if it was a dealer's license, it'd be different, they'd have paperwork, and you have a paper trail, but if we don't have a paper trail, and it's just, you know, the correspondence through internet from the consumer to, to the manufacturer, and then the car gets built and gets delivered, and then the dealer notifies so-and-so in Connecticut or New York, and they drive down the pike, pick the vehicle up, I, I'm not clear on how we're going to see the money. That was my big question.
Good question.
It's a good question, John, because I was actually going to address that at some point as well, but that, but now that you brought it up, does anybody have an answer for that?
I mean, I think all we can really say to that is that they're obligated to follow all of the ordinances and requirements of the township, to the extent that there is mercantile tax that is to be collected in Warminster, they will have to file a yearly report with the township, just like any other business would, and the township has an absolute right to audit those, just like it does with any other business. So if there's concerns about that, or there's some question about that, that's the time that those kinds of things get worked out. If the township believes that they're not getting what they believe they should be getting, your auditor certainly will raise that, and, you know, we have to comply.
Okay. My, just, the only follow-up question I would have to that is that, can you get an answer from someone at Tesla, whether they intend to, as they've done for the other four dealerships in Pennsylvania, if they intend to apply for a license?
If you'd like, you can certainly ask the question.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Amy. Okay. Anybody else?
All right, at that time, I would say for now, the hearing is hereby continued until February 2nd, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, thanks, John.
You want to take a five-minute break before we?
Yeah, let's have a, let's have a, let's say a five-minute recess, please.
Yeah, let's have a, let's have a, let's say a five-minute recess, please. Yeah, they're still there. Okay. Let's bring the meeting to order again, please. All right, we had a lengthy land use matters with the public hearing, so we'll move on to public comment. So residents and business owners are the only people that will come up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. So, public comments open. The podium. The podium.
Hi, I'm Vladimir, I'm sorry, never let this go.
Yeah, that's okay.
So Vladimir, eleven hundred York Road, Warminster, I'm a managing partner over at Let's Towing. And just wanted to talk about our business. We've been around forty-five years with local Warminster, and about twenty with township duty tow. As of recent, we've walked into some issues, and I just wanted to clarify everything and talk about the ordinance seven seventy. So every single year, we've been annually inspected, and with our used occupancy site at our business location of five, six, five West Street Road. This year was a little different. We did not get any courtesy calls, we did not get anything. We had ordinance change, and pretty much my business was rendered illegal, and no longer I can contribute to duty tow for Warminster. Obviously, that's me paying my bills and me able to move on with my life. So my biggest question to you is, why did this occur, and why were we targeted, and why were we legislated out of business and duty tow for Warminster?
Thanks for your comment. We're not going to answer that question. That's, you know, you have three minutes to make a comment. And we'll reserve our comment to the end, okay?
We don't, we won't take up your time.
We're not going to take up, yeah, your time.
We will answer.
That's the only question.
We will answer at the end.
Yes, we will answer at the end, thank you. Who's next?
My name is Harry Mopert Senior, as I said before. We are the owners of three ninety-five Ivy Land Road, Mopert Brothers Collision Services Group. We purchased that property from Al Millions five years ago. Part of the selling feature of the purchase of that business was the fact that it was a forty-plus-year towing relationship with the township. And he made it very, or the family made it, that it was, had a lot of value to it. So that's one of the reasons why we did purchase the property and the business to come into this area. As the gentleman said prior to, a lot of the normal policies for application for the towing contract changed this year, and it rendered, as he said, a lot out of business, but we now have tow trucks, and we've performed all the duties in the past five years that we've been involved with the township, and now it no longer exists.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Mark Dutz. I own Modern Auto and Collision, one hundred York Road in Warminster. My comments are short, it's just that I've served this community for over fifty years without incident, and I've recently just been thrown to the ground without any kind of answers. Nobody has answers as to what happened. I think that's sad. This board is sad pushing something like this through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Carrie Colbach. I'm a resident of Warminster. I'm here tonight with concerns for fire, the fire department and fire daytime response. I was at the town hall meeting last night, and they put up a very nice presentation. And I have concern, I'm a resident, and if I have an emergency during the day, what is the response time going to be? You know, and that's for any resident here.
We can answer that. Your response time is going to be probably better than it is now, because where was, let me ask you a question.
If I could, could I respond, please, to this? I'm sorry, your name again, ma'am?
Carrie.
Carrie, my name's Lisa, nice to meet you. We're actively working on solutions to improve fire availability in the township. There are alternative solutions, some are alternative solutions. We're looking to hire a deputy fire marshal who will be fully trained, will conduct fire inspections, will respond to emergency calls, will assist with fighting fires. We're working with Ivy Land Fire Company to assist the township with daytime coverage. And we are looking, we will pay for gear and equipment for new volunteer firefighters. Those are some of the solutions we're looking at for, to help with daytime response.
Okay, I mean, but you need new firefighters in order to have gear. So I mean, we can have gear, but if we don't have firefighters, it's kind of null and void.
Well, we have.
I think, I said for new volunteer firefighters.
Well, correct. From what I understand, there were six that came onboarded with two hundred hours of training. And of those six, none have daytime availability. So again, it brings a gap in daytime availability.
Yeah, we're working on that. We understand that, we understand it's a problem, and we understand also, was our emergency management director there last night?
I'm new to the township, so I have no idea.
I believe he was, and I believe he should have brought all this to the floor and told everyone, no one's house is burning down. We have coverage, there's a whole, there's an entire call system and support system. So whatever you heard last night that you're in jeopardy, that is absolutely not true. As a matter of fact, quite honestly, I've heard that the surrounding townships respond faster than some of our local firefighters.
They're mutually paid firefighters, so they should be responding timely.
Not all of them.
They're paid to respond timely.
Not all of them. I'm being honest, let's be honest. There was a lot of things in that presentation last night that were unfactual, especially the financial end of it. But just rest assured, we're working on the problem, and right now, your house is safe during the day and in the evening.
So I'm just wondering, they said that there was a study done by the township in regards to this, and they found in the study that this need was there. Is that true, false?
There's been different studies done from different, from the county. They don't mention the county study, do they? Because that's.
I'm asking.
Well, there were a couple of studies done, and you know, and we're keeping, we are working, turning every stone over to make sure we find a solution, a temporary solution actually, until Harrisburg gives us the tools to move forward. Because the problem, as we said here several times, and the fire chiefs agreed with us, the problem is in Harrisburg or the county that has not given the local municipalities the tools to move forward and possibly have full-time firefighters. So, you know, again.
How are the other counties doing it than the other towns?
Well, when you want to, when you want.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Could I allow John Rayme to come up and speak to the financials of the situation?
Well, we should, we should wait until we finish public comment first.
Yeah, let's finish public comment for that. But anyway, don't forget that some of these other counties or some of these other townships, our township has a lower tax base because it's been developed a long time ago. There hasn't been a reassessment in Bucks County for fifty years. Montgomery County has reassessed four times. So one mil of increase in Montgomery County is about one point three million dollars of revenue. One mil in Bucks County is only three hundred thousand dollars and change. So there's a huge disparity. You know, everybody wants to service, but nobody wants to pay for it, which we believe, once Harrisburg gives us the tools by raising the millage in the fire fund, that gives us the opportunity to pay for a sustainable pay, you know, financial stability, to pay for them for perpetuity, that's what we need. So I suggested this before, and I'm going to say it again on the record, we need you, the public, needs to talk to your state senator, your representative, and people at the county. I mean, because we're at the bottom, we don't make those rules. And, you know, if we can't afford it, we're more than willing to work with all the fire companies.
What about the grant that would fund it?
It's been three minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we have to move on, thank you. By the way, the grant is, now, the grant has too many strings attached in it, and it will bankrupt the township as soon as the grant's done. And we don't have the grant. That, you have to make expenditures to get reimbursed for the grant. So there's a little misinformation there as well.
I was informed of that last night.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hello again, Michael Negafin, Warminster Township. So with all due respect, some of what I heard was comparable to smoke and mirrors. I don't sit up here on the board, but it's interesting, it's interesting that we hear a presentation that is put on by the fire department, a very good presentation, that we hear one thing from them, and we hear something a hundred and eighty degrees out from you guys.
That's correct.
So why is that? Because we hire you to be our representatives in our best interest. Why is three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars sitting in a fund from a one mil increase in taxes specifically for the firefighters' needs? That, I think, four managers and supervisor boards have had plenty of time to review the issues. Why is the money sitting there not being allocated to the fire department to respond to their needs that have been identified through an outside agency to get them the daily coverage that they need? If your house was burning during the middle of the day, and you needed a response, let's say not the middle of the day, let's say four o'clock in the evening, and you need a response from Hatboro, you need a response from Southampton. You know, I've been on York Road, or Street Road rather, I know how crowded it can be. The response time for them is going to compromise the structure that you live in and possibly your safety. However, our Warminster local fire department can respond without having to go through that traffic jam. Why don't you allocate the money to them, just like you collected it from us for them? Let it go. Oh, and the grant, the grant, it's available. I don't know all the hoops and the strings that have to be pulled for the grant, but it sounds to me like it's a grant process. It's some amount of money to be spread over three years. We may or may not have access to it right now, but it's an application that can be made. But I understand the money is out there from us for them. Let them have it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we give both fire companies five hundred thousand dollars a year for their operations.
For their operations, but that's outside of the need.
Come up back to the opposing, please, if you want to speak. That's forty-five seconds.
Granted, that's for.
Forty-five seconds, okay.
Granted, that's for their operations, but there's an outstanding need for staffing.
Well, the operations include. Well, the operations include recruitment as well.
But there's an outstanding need for staffing, and the tax has been collected for that purpose.
The tax, the tax is sitting there, and we are going to turn every stone over, we know there's a problem, and we're going to have a solution long before this becomes an issue.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, because, because don't remember, or please remember, we do represent the residents, so we do not want someone to do- Thank you. So anyhow, we understand, and we're working on it, and we'll have a solution, we already have things figured out, it's just everybody has to put their big boy pants on and come to a reasonable compromise until we have the tools to pay for full-time firefighters. Thank you very much. Okay.
Anyone else for public comment?
Do you want to respond? I can do it. All right, so as far as the duty tow, this board recognized that there was a lot of chaos in how it was operated, and how it affected the residents and the safety of the traveling public and the residents, and we decided to make these changes to enhance and make the duty tow more efficient and more safe for the public, so thank you very much.
Are we able to report to that?
Excuse me?
Are we able to report to that?
No, it's, first public comment's closed now, thank you. All right, we're going to move on, consent agenda. So consider a board, consider approval of board supervisors' minutes dated December 15th, 2022, 15, yeah, December 15th, okay. Yeah, yeah, that was January, right, right, great, great. All right, recommendation award Shades of Green for the 2022-23 tree trimming and removal services, and secondary award to Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn. Christhome Shepherd's Crossing Phase 3A, Julie Court Cottages, release number two, final from the escrow account in the amount of eight fails and $735.35. And is this Ask Me? Ask Me Local 598 tenant agreement for a new four-year contract.
It's 1598.
I'm sorry, 1598, yes. Thank you, Judy. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second? Any questions or comments?
Sorry.
Questions or comments from the public? Thank you. Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right. Mr. McKee, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I'll ask for a second, to approve the bill list dated January 19th, 2023, in the amount of $1,651,976.61.
Okay, second, questions? Questions from the public? Okay, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0, thank you. All right, we don't have any unfinished business, we don't have any new business, is that true? What am I skipping?
John Ramey.
Oh, John, I'm sorry.
Come on down.
See, it's nine thirty.
I was trying to make it record breaking fast.
Yes, please do.
Everything still looks as good as it did last month. Revenues are up 3%, about 395,000. Again, the big things, transfer tax is down 362,000, but it's over budget by 300, or 138,000, so we're looking good there still. EIT, BBT, Mercantile, they're all up considerably, so that's what's leading to the overall increase compared to last year. Expenses are down 3%, another 356,000, so overall, we're about $750,000 better at the end of November in 2020 than we were in 2021, so we're looking really good there.
Good.
Yeah, with no other big expenses scheduled for December, at only 88% of budget, where we would normally be at like 92%, I think we're good, expenses will be under budget come year end.
That's excellent. Good news, John.
Thanks, John. John, could you please just touch on the fire fund?
Yes. So, in our audit of financial statements of 2021, there's a fund balance at the end of the year of just under $96,000. Usually what we look for in our financial statements, and these are GFOI, Government Finance Officers Association, guidelines are about three months, so what we would really want to see is about, about 700, or $174,000 in reserves in the fire, in any fund that we have. Yet usually, everything that comes into the fire fund, we try and distribute out. With the one mil increase, we still kept it to the one and a half that we would be distributing in 2022. We do make three different payments, the first two are based off the budget, and then there's a reconciliation payment that comes out in December, that's from December 1st of the prior year through November 30th. So we take what the budget payments were, what the actual that came in, and then we do distribute that one and a half mil that was collected, based off of, I believe it's a 2005 agreement, so we give that, give that money directly to the fire companies. In 2001, that total was 695,759, that was distributed for public safety purposes.
Okay. 2001?
Twenty-one.
2021.
Twenty-one.
Wait a second.
So this is the, we haven't even started 2022 audit yet, so these are the most recent numbers we have.
So what is the actual fund balance as of the end of '22? Would you have that number?
I can give it to you as of the end of November.
Okay.
So without, the problem is, this is through the end of November, this doesn't include the final reconciliation-
Reconciliation, that was my next question.
Yes, so through the end of November, there was an increase all the way up to 508,000, so that's the ninety, well, say 96,000 plus 508, less the two payments that were made out to the fire companies. And that, and what that does, it kept in that 1% that we raised, that we thought that we would be able to bank for some time to pay firefighters in the future. It turned out when we read the second-class township code, we shouldn't be banking this money for those purposes.
So what you're saying was that-
The money we bring in-
The money we brought in has to be used, and this is what I've been trying to say, it's actually illegal to do that, it's a violation of the second-class township code, that's correct.
No matter what, this money has to be used for fire protective services.
Right.
It's either going to be distributed to the fire companies, given it to them in different ways based on agreements, it has to be used for fire services.
That's correct.
There's no way around it, that's why we have a separate fund, doesn't get any of the money for that purpose.
But you need to carry a minimum fund balance.
We would like to carry a minimum of three months, because-
What would be three months?
174,000. So that's why we're trying to build it up to that, I'm not sure what it would be after those payments that happen in December, we'll find out in two weeks when I make the December report.
Right.
John, do you know what the, do you have the amount of December payments?
Not on hand.
You don't have them right now, okay.
And that's, like I said, that's based off of a 2005 agreement, I believe, of, I think 67% goes to Warminster, and 33% goes to Hartsville.
Hartsville, that's right. Okay. Thank you, any questions?
All right, thanks.
Stick around, John, we may need you.
All right.
Professional reports. The for Lisa on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I have is that the next meeting for the board of supervisors will be February 2nd, at seven o'clock.
And because we have a continuance, we'll need to have that meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Mark, I can't-
We're home for the work.
Right, right, okay. Township solicitor.
I'll keep it brief, I've got nothing to report, and you'll have our January report at the February meeting.
Okay. Craig, we've heard quite a lot from you tonight.
Yeah, I have a few more things, I'm sorry. You have our January's engineers' report, seems like it was a long time ago, but we were working on Shenandoah Woods, I have had no complaints, no issues, hopefully that means the township staff has it as well, and that the slab removal is continuing, but I know Mr. Hayes was involved a lot in that with myself, Tom, and Scott and Randy, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes with Shenandoah Woods, getting that to the final stage, and I'm glad to hear that there's no issues. And your February meeting's going to be very busy, we will have your road program, I'm not sure if Andrew's coming or not, or Aaron, but we're gearing up with the authorization from the manager to start the road program and work with Public Works on that. We're also working with Public Works on, this was part of your infrastructure committee meeting, and items that had to be taken care of at the Public Works site, we've been doing a environmental studies, and we're going to go out to bid on soil remediation and fixing the tanks that are out at Public Works, that's been an ongoing issue, I believe Andrew mentioned that last year, so that'll be also ready to go for bid. You're also going to have several land development projects on your February meeting that have been delayed, pushed back because of tonight. Hartsville Court, 1250 West Bristol Road, that has been around for fifteen years, that was a settlement plan, you haven't seen that in quite a while. Evergreen Avenue, the mixed use, that received approval at Planning Commission as well, they were pushed back to the February meeting. And then Arby's, which is at Center Point Place, which is on Street Road in front of the Giant, that's the old Saladworks Building, if anyone-
Excuse me, excuse me, we're, can we keep the noise down a little bit? Thank you.
The, it's the old Saladworks Building, they're going to actually leave a portion of the building and reuse that, so it's a nice redevelopment.
Arby's?
Arby's will be coming in.
Yay!
All right, and one last thing I want to give a shout out, Michael Z from my office is here, everybody teases me about how well Aaron makes me look, but there's the guy that makes Aaron look good.
I thought he was somebody here to give us a bad time.
He's the guy that works on this. I said, all right, you've been here four years, let's get you out for a meeting. Mike, actually, most of the landscaping letting questions that I asked tonight were from Michael, so I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, by the way, Craig, can you comment, there's a rumor floating around that's unfounded about development at the Norris Town and Street Road site?
I was, but I was trying to keep it a little short.
That's fine, just quickly-
I was contacted by Christhome representatives via email, I forwarded it to the staff, the developer, Wright Partners, I was trying to do a shopping center at Street and Norris Town Road, we went back and forth for almost a year and couldn't get anywhere on that project. They have not continued their agreement with Christhome, and they've entered into a new tentative agreement with a new developer to try to pick up that project and bring it through. So we have not seen plans, I haven't even had a contact with anybody yet, but Christhome did notify.
No applications submitted, no applications-
Well, I assume they put up a sign already.
This board hasn't approved anything, because that's what I'm reading.
I haven't seen it yet.
That's the rumors going around, I just wanted to be clear here.
You'll probably not, you'll probably not see that for three to four or five months, they may have to submit something.
So there's no application been-
No application, they're willing to work with what the prior developer started, and try to address our issues to bring that into compliance.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I see we have some new people present, here's our second chance, come on up, Mitch.
You got it. Hello, I had no plans on coming here tonight, but I'm not going to sit idly back and listen to slanderous comments.
Okay, what were they?
People get out faster than Warminster, you know, we're trying to scare people. We did none of that, we told, no, we took the high road for this whole thing, tonight you took the low road.
Glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear that.
You took the low road.
Okay.
As far, is my comment?
Go ahead, I'm not going to let him talk.
Thank you.
You got it.
As far as fire departments getting out quicker, I would assume you talked to the county and got printouts of our response time?
We have that.
That we literally, we literally just, I just came home while I was waiting to listen to the Tesla presentation and doing your intermission, because we again had to respond to Centennial Station for a choking victim. We were there a good five minutes before the squad arrived.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
Luckily, it is great, so we're very slow.
That's at night, that's at night, right?
That is at night, when we're here, correct.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
And we do this during the day as well.
We appreciate that, Mitch.
But it's harder to get out, there you go. The next thing is, the next thing is, did you get studies from the township on our response time, when you're making these comments?
We've looked at some of them, yes.
Yes, and can you pick one time that we were horrible with this response time?
No, I'm not going to get into that, I'm going to leave that up to Lisa.
Because there are many instances where different trucks get out before us or after us, and that's back and forth all day long.
No, you guys do a good job, I'm not, you know, I just, you know, some of the things I heard last night, I didn't agree with.
And as far, as far as the county study, I did not bring it up, you are correct.
Right.
Because the county study was basically a mimic of SR6, said the county could hire, could not hire firefighters, it's not under the provisions of the county. Right now, if they did, it would take all 52 municipalities to sign on to this, and they could do a rolling firefighters per station, each township would pay in. It's an idea, you can't get two police departments to decide on merging, or two fire departments decide on merging, and you're going to get 52 townships in this county to form a county fire department, that would be the ultimate.
I didn't think it was every one of them, Mitch, was it? I thought it was, yeah, like, we could merge with some of our local people, right?
Well, you could certainly, but you would still be responsible for the salaries.
Absolutely.
If the counties did it, the county would be the response, it'd be county employees.
Right.
But that's not happening anytime in the next decade.
No, we know.
So the fact of bringing that up was a moot point. As far as the finances that I brought up, false finances.
I didn't say false finances, I said they were inaccurate.
Okay, inaccurate finances.
Correct, don't put words in my mouth.
Tomato, tomato.
No, that's not tomato, tomato, inaccurate finances, that's an old, old spreadsheet, we saw it, and it's inaccurate.
That was from your current finance department, that was done.
Yeah.
That was the most recent one. What part of those are incorrect, if we could address that?
Well, I'm going to let Lisa address all this.
I'm not going to address it, I'm going to let him finish making his comments, and then we're going to be done with it.
And as far as working on this, we've met here numerous times, and every time, we smile and say we're going to meet, and other than trying to get this big multi-t township meeting together, you've made no attempt to reach out, we've had one meeting with Tom since then.
Thank you, the three-minute timer lets us up, so thank you.
You're good.
Thanks, Spencer.
Yeah, I just have a-
Come on up, Pete, come on up.
Come to the podium, please.
Okay, so I'm Pete Brokum, the chairman of the board of the Warminster Fire Department, all right, and unfortunately, I was home watching the meeting too, and the fire department came up and stuff like that, I didn't make the last night's meeting, because actually, I'm a firefighter at Hatboro too, as you're aware, I run with both fire departments, I just retired as a chief officer after 37 years, because it's time for me to move on to the pasture and have these younger guys, you know.
Congratulations.
But the problem is, you know, we need help, you know, Mitch has been here, I know Chris McDonald's been here, and, you know, we need help, we need daytime firemen. Right now-
We know.
You've got like 200 years of age or experience riding the daytime fire trucks, all right, and we're about, we're about ready to move on, all right, so you need, you need to get help here. And no offense, ma'am, I don't know who you are, but Ivyland, come on, we've been dealing with Ivyland for many a years, many, 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 many years, tried to get them to train with us, tried to get them to do this, they just don't want to budge.
Can I ask a question on that?
And you're going to have a meeting with them?
Well, hold on a second.
Good luck.
Aren't you guys training with them already?
We've been working to build a relationship.
Yeah, that's fantastic, because that's what we're asking for. Well, 50 years, 50 years.
Let me throw this out at you, when you talk to-
Come on up, Mitch.
Hold on, hold on, no, wait, no, no, hold on, hold on.
Stop, that's public comment. Let him finish.
Let this gentleman finish his comment.
This is not a forum to discuss everything why we don't with them, but I can tell you that I talked, I talked to the chief there, and I asked him, are you looking to help with our daytime problems? He flat out told me, no, I cannot help with your daytime problems.
Really?
That was directly from Dave Sharp to me on a phone call.
That's interesting, well, that's why we want to get you all in the same room.
You know, and we need to find out where most of their members live.
Mitch, if I could, I don't know, I'm assuming that you heard my comments on, I don't know, on YouTube, or were you hitting the-
I'm a part of it at a fire call and some of it driving here, but I heard the comments about the Kipshock County and some of the solutions you're working on.
Right, right.
Which, again, with very little fire department input.
Well, we keep trying to organize this meeting.
We could have done a meeting with, like we normally do, just with some board members and fire department people, and got the basis for this moving. If we had, you know, I said this last night-
Well, wait a minute, hold on a second.
If there had been an ounce of communications, we would not be standing here, we wouldn't have had our town halls. Again, our town halls are this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. at Hartsville Fire Company on York Fire Company on York Road. The next Saturday, next Saturday, which is the 28th, I believe, Hartsville Fire Company. And again, the next Wednesday, which would be February 1st, 7 o'clock at our firehouse.
Okay. Thanks. Well, so, hold on a second.
And I might, any of you who want to come.
Hold on a second, um, before you step away. Um, we tried two or three times, and I know, I think you were on vacation.
The very first one, you gave me three days' notice over the holidays, yes.
Right. And, uh, and then we tried again, and I think you guys couldn't make it, but I understand.
We were good for everyone since then.
Hold on a second. I understand.
Can you stop that, please?
Um, I understand that we're going to meet next week sometime, aren't we?
No, now we're up to March. Last I saw on the emails bouncing around.
I didn't hear that.
I saw State Representative Monroe looking for March something.
Well, that was State Representative Monroe. I think we, we, we actually want to sit down with you, Chris, Ivyland, and, um, some other fire companies as well.
Yeah, I've talked to Chief Salisker. I know he'll be there.
Exactly.
I've talked to Senator.
Are, so are you guys available for that?
Uh, I don't even know anymore. Uh, yes, if it was the date we originally planned.
Well, it wasn't March.
Uh, the last emails floating around tonight were March.
That's, yeah, that's accurate, accurate.
Is it?
It is.
Well, wait a minute.
Because we were saying that every time we turn around, it's moved up again.
Yeah, I know. It's been a struggle to get this meeting together, and we really need to have it. I agree, you know, and, um, so maybe we'll try to, we'll.
I know there was a response, I believe, from, um, Chris McDonald saying.
That we were both available, and there's dates as well.
In, in February. Were, are you available February 6th and 9th, that week?
We are available that week as well.
Okay.
Whatever he, dates.
That's what I thought it was, Mitch. February 6th and 9th.
The last couple were, I saw March were the last few coming out.
I think it might have been an error on Representative Monroe's.
I think that was mistaken, yeah. I thought it was supposed to be some, whenever, when we can all meet for the week of February 6th to the 9th.
I know. The one Tuesday we couldn't make it, we have, which I think was the beginning, uh, was the Tesla drill that we're doing with Tesla, and the other one was our town hall, which was that first week in February. So, I guess the 8th and 9th pushes it to the next week.
Right. And you guys are available?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, I want it to happen. I really do.
Same here.
I, I've been wanting this to happen for a while, this meeting, so.
Careful what you wish for.
Mitch, what time? Mitch, if I may, while you're here.
Wow, that's not a threat, is it?
No, no. Well, the same, if you have covered that, may not be what you're looking for.
Well, you know what? And that's fine, but we need to do something, you know. I get it.
And, and the other thing I want to address, since I got my three minutes back, is with the grant. That, thanks, Pete.
You, you, you ceded your time?
That, that grant has another year on it. Actually, a year from March something, I believe. And the notion, you do, there, there are stipulations. The firemen have to be available 51% of the time. We clearly do that. The firemen have to, you have to lay the money out. Very true for a month, but you got a backlog of money waiting that you could use for that.
No, we can't, actually.
But you could start this year because you've been collecting the half a mil for this year.
Hold on a second, Mitch, because that's where you're mistaken, and that's what our previous managers thought, okay? And then we come to find out, and I brought this up to you before, that the second-class township code does not allow you to spend more than one mil regardless of what is in there.
Correct.
So, so that's not, that's not enough.
No, no, you don't have to.
For four firefighters.
One mil and inspection fees will cover four firefighters.
Hold on a second. We're only allowed to spend, one mil is $300,000.
300, I gave you that exact number, and I'll tell you exactly what was.
338,000 dollars.
344,716.
So, you got to write down the payment. Okay.
That was from the tax office.
Right. Okay.
I put a request in to see what one mil.
So, you're saying, so we can spend up to one mil, and you're saying that'll pay for four?
That is incorrect. That is an incorrect statement. You can take one mil out of the fire tax. You could take a million dollars from something else to use for salaries.
Oh, okay, okay.
Correct.
Well, we don't have that money. That's the unfortunate part.
No, you don't. You don't, but you do have another 150,000 from inspection fees.
Well, where's, yeah, okay. Well, John, you want to help us out here?
Come here.
Listen, Mitch, well, let's sit down the week of the 6th, and we'll talk about all this.
Well, I mean, you made some comments, and I just want to clear.
Yeah, alls I know is that you're, you're asking us to go to the general fund, which is just.
No, 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 no. I'm not asking you. I'm asking.
Well, where else are we going to go? Should we cut?
The inspection fees. And if you did have to.
Well, the inspection fees go into the general fund.
It would be a minimal amount. And you know what? As a resident, I'll answer that as yes. If it's a minimal amount of money, yes, it should come from the general fund.
John, does, does the inspection fees go into the general fund?
Yes.
Do we have enough money in the general fund to take money out of it?
We're building fund balance now.
We're trying to build fund balance. Yes.
But that money gets given to a third-party inspection company right now to do that. It's a large portion of it. I don't know the exact number, so I'm not going to pretend like I do.
So, what are you proposing? Well, let's not get into it.
You would not.
Let's, let's have the meeting. Let's schedule the meeting.
Let's have this meeting.
Firefighters. Well, let the people in the public hear. We'd let the firefighters do the inspections.
They're not allowed under, under the safer grant.
They most absolutely are.
Not under the safer grant.